Our nine o'clock meeting is now beginning with kind of our little weekly discussion with the sheriff on goings on in departments. Go ahead.
So just, it's not in the thing because it doesn't have to be because you guys already ruled on it. I just need your signature on the legal contract for the 911. Ellen looked at it. Just need you to sign it.
Okay.
Page four.
Page four.
Which it's, take a flip to it. Ellen read it over and it's all okay.
Okay.
All right. So, um, we got that golden white car back here. It's a...
You mean the little Honda or whatever it is?
Yeah, the Honda, then there's a gold one too that's, I forget what that one is. But it doesn't have like AC or nothing and it's got a constant flat, we always have to air it up. And Honda, the battery shot on that, you know, we keep jumping it every day, well, not every day, but whenever we need to use it. So we, we just think it's best for us to sell them and get rid of them because we don't really use them at all. And free up space to park two of the spare patrol cars in their spots and get them out from up front where I think it's starting to look trashy. I'd like to move them in back so we free up parking and all that. So if we can, we don't want to move those to the impound lot because I don't want them to get broken into, but once Gordon or gets a few cars or something.
For the auction.
Or if we can auction these off first or however we want to sell them, just get rid of them and then, so I can free up those two spots and move two patrol cars back there.
Can we move, I mean, the problem I have with that is we have so limited parking like during juror...
District court days.
District court days and, you know, stuff like that that, you know...
Well, they're up against the sheds, so...
Yeah, but, I mean, that's, people park there during...
So what do you want, where do you want me to move?
I don't, well, I mean...
If we move them to the impound lot, they're going to get busted in and broken in, then they're going to be even worth less.
Maybe, maybe we could expedite this since these are kind of somewhat...
Right, that's why I thought I could just...
...because our cars, maybe we can just run an ad in the paper.
Two thousand bucks each or something.
Accepting sealed bids, accepting sealed bids on such and such date and...
Yeah, we can do, that's how we do it.
Put it in the paper and we could put it on our website and then maybe, then we'd be able to have those move out of here within three weeks or whatever.
Sounds good to me.
And then the parking shouldn't be...
Well, yeah, but, yeah, but I mean, if he moves his cars back here too, you know...
Oh, you're talking about...
That's I'm talking about.
The future when those cars are gone.
If he moves patrol cars back there, then it, we have such limited parking when it comes to, to, you know...
Well, I know that Norm is gonna, he talked to the city up out the street here. So right behind the jail, like currently, there's a semi truck parallel parking there. He's gonna paint, the city's okay with him painting some little forty-five diagonal, so we'd be able to have another seven parking spots if people utilize them correctly instead of, right now they're parallel parking, you only get maybe three cars or one semi, but we could get six or so, maybe could park your, your patrol cars right there near the jail driveway.
Right. Because right now we're in front of the trees.
Right.
On that other side.
But I know Norm was gonna start doing that, you can ask him when the, if those lines are painted, that might diminish motorhomes pulling trailers and all that, pulling there and occupying the spaces less efficiently.
Right.
And you could have some cars there and then on district court day, there'd be more cars for people to park there too. And then the car, his car wouldn't be over there, it would be right here.
Yeah, yeah, that, that was just my only concern was...
Well, I just don't think anybody would park there because it's by the garbage and by those other vehicles, you know, I mean, the only one that parks there is, is our HR lady next to the vehicles. It's her spot. I tried to steal it, but she won't let me. So I don't know, whatever you guys want.
That was just my only...
I guess once we sell them, we can figure out some spots.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, if we have the titles, make sure we have the titles.
We do, well, Kalan should have them because they're paid for.
And they're all, yeah.
They were given, one was given to us through, one of the drug task forces gave it to us years ago, I guess.
That's the one that Adam was using.
Probably the gold one.
And, yeah, used cars are kind of a, being sought after, they, you know, just needs a hundred dollar battery, someone might...
Sign it up, right.
Eight twenty, eight thirty.
Yeah, the white one, they, when they drove it, they said it's fine, but...
Yeah.
Just the batteries, and I didn't want to buy a battery, so...
Yeah.
And didn't you say Gordon had thought maybe a four or five of the other ones were out there that's ready?
Gordon was grabbing, four or five, almost ready to go. When he was in my office the other day, he's really putting a pressure on.
Oh, good. Well, I mean, if that's gonna come to fruition earlier, I mean, I...
Yeah, well, I'll get a hold of him on that.
I don't know, maybe the newspaper idea doesn't need to go through.
Well, I'm gonna see him tomorrow at the car show and, because he was gonna, because I don't know how to vote on cars, so he was gonna walk me through it. So I'll ask him how close he really is to a couple of cars and then...
You might talk to Jason too because I think he had like a water truck or, I don't know, he might have some stuff that he wants to throw in.
Some equipment he needs to go?
Throw in on the chair sale, the sale too.
County sale or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, he'll be here later today, so...
Yeah.
And then, uh, because we are not getting any applications for dispatchers yet, um, so we're down one. There was a Missoula dispatcher that offered to come in and work like twenty hours a week for a couple of months. And I was, at first she was, the rumor was she was willing to work for our wages, but then...
Oh.
No, I haven't talked to her, this is all through one of the deputies that knows her. So I'm trying to get ahold of her to see what her real, what her number would be to just fill in as a temp and then, and then help actually do maybe give some experience training to, um, some of ours. But Tiffany's been really good so far training them and getting them up to speed with that billings experience she's had. And has really helped, uh, Lisa, um, she was the, what was she, what was her old job? Tax lady like thing, CA, whatever they're called, yeah, so she's really coming along.
CPA.
Yeah, CPA, there you go. So she's really coming along.
Oh, good.
So, yeah.
What did we advertise that dispatcher position at?
Fifteen dollars an hour.
Fifteen?
Yeah, jail and dispatchers, all of it is straight fifteen. Um, I think Kim and Anna May are the only ones that are above fifteen right now. And on that note, I just put cert pay because I didn't know, but like Tiffany's been helping us with that. Our, our CAD system, which is called ADSI.
Yeah.
It's, none of us have had training because it came in before us. And then now that we've replaced everybody, even like me and Wayne stumbled through it, deputies are stumbling through it. We're not using it to its best ability. We went to a roundtable meeting in Lake County and I took Tiffany with me and the salesman was there for ADSI. Had all these other departments that are using it and like I said before, we were gonna pull away from it. But anyways, the point being is Tiffany's taking on the, the role of getting dispatchers and getting it lined out. We were putting addresses in wrong and our stuff was bleeding into Sanders County because we're sharing a, a server right now, but we're gonna break away from that here shortly. Um, so we were, so if we put town pump, it would maybe put, give us their town pump instead of our town pump for the address and vice versa for them too. So it was a big mess, we weren't, dispatchers weren't entering addresses correctly. So she's retraining them on all that. Plus then she's gone up to Sanders and did some training again with them. And then she's also, like I said, training just radio procedures and all that. So with that, I'd like to give her a little kicker and I don't know if it would be a, a raise or, and we can wait till the...
Act it.
Budget, but I'm just putting it in your head, I'm not asking for an action item right now. I just wanted to let you know what I'm thinking and see what you guys are against or not. But I told her I'd bring it up and just see what we feel, how the waters lukewarm or not if, you know, at the budget time, if we could, whether we do an assert or we actually give her an hour, you know, a bump in her hour rate. Either way, I, you know, I'm sure she'll be thankful.
Well, we no longer have a dispatch supervisor that we hired at a higher wage, so...
And that's gone now.
That's what I'm saying, so...
That's what I was thinking, so we could split some of that up. Right, right. Because Anna May is doing civil with Tabitha, plus, um, she's doing the schedule. It might get pulled for her, but anyway, she's doing the schedules. And then, um, and both of them are, well, Tabitha's just now getting her notary. Um, she had a, and then, but Anna May already has it done, so, but I wanted two notaries in case one leaves, we have a backup. So anyhow, so I just wanted to run that by, let you guys think about that and then maybe late July or whenever we do the budget, we can talk more about that, see if we can get that done. And then the jailers, again, this is just to think about and it'd come to the thing, but transport, now when they transport for the marshals, if we get marshals, which we're still waiting in the contract for that, they're gonna pay thirty dollars an hour for our minimum to go to Missoula and back. But we're gonna need jailers, we're, they're gonna qualify, three of them are gonna qualify with their weapons on Wednesday coming up. So after they're done qualifying, they'll be able to transport like to the hospital or wherever. So I'm just, so far it hasn't happened because we haven't called them, but I want to make sure when I call them, they're excited to come transport. So I don't know, it'd be overtime anyways, I guess, so they're gonna be getting more than their hourly rate because it'd be work above and beyond. So actually, when I wrote that, I forgot it's actually overtime they'll be getting, so, um, just want to make sure they'll come out, but we'll be paying them overtime when they do that. So that was kind of a moot point once I, I've totally spaced out the overtime. Because I was gonna say, let's give them a little extra for transport, but I guess they'll be getting it with overtime pay, so... And then the flea market.
Oh, yeah. How'd that go?
Well, good news is we didn't have any fights and nobody died and all that, traffic was atrocious. Thank God for the traffic lights, they helped up as best as they could, but they were overwhelmed. I mean, that, coming off that interstate, oh my goodness.
Terrible. And it ain't, it isn't any better when that, when that bend in the road isn't there. I mean, it's just that bad too.
Right, right.
It's just two lanes trying to get off there then.
Right, right. Um, the only thing, I was next year, I don't know, and if I missed it, I, I would like to be in the planning meetings next year because even Jerry Doctor and I talked about that, you know, when you, I don't care about parking anywhere else, let them park mad crazy, but when they go into that, that loop, like where you're cooking at, there's that, and they had the bathroom set there, that should be off limits to the public, that should be for emergency vehicles and handicap maybe parking. And I'd say handicap parking, emergency vehicles and the vendors that are bringing in the food or whatever they need, you know, that, because if there would have been a heart attack or something, that ambulance would not have been able to get in there. They were, it was a free for all. And the guy with the beard with the thing that said security on his, he disappeared and he wasn't monitoring parking at all. And he looked at me and he says, well, Ernie does this. And I go, well, Ernie's not with us right now and nobody told me that that was supposed to happen. And there was no even parking for us to park and get out and walk. And I go, well, I'm not parking three miles away and walking here, so we just saturated and just kept driving and, you know, we, there was three of us at one time and then four of us at the end, just driving ever, all over town. It stayed in Malibu, nobody fought, which I was shocked, there was no...
I never heard any complaints.
No. Except that, just that loop, I would like to restrict that parking in that loop, but, but then, I think, was it you saying they're gonna redo the parking? Somebody says they're gonna...
Yeah, they are.
Well, that was Steve Young.
They are, yeah.
Yeah, he said they're gonna do...
And George Bailey said that, they're gonna do more off in the trees there.
They're gonna, so are they gonna mow down the trees and take out some trees?
I don't know, I think the forest service, that's all forest service ground.
Right.
So I don't know.
Go towards that helicopter pad or something.
Yeah.
Which is fine, as long as that loop, because that's where the ambulance or the fire trucks or us need to get to and...
Yeah, that should be kept open.
Totally, and if they had car, even one guy parked his truck right in front of the bathrooms almost.
I know, they, they are so stupid.
And nobody stopped him. By the time we got there, he's gone and somebody put a note on his truck and I'm like, well, what good is that?
Yeah.
You know? And then somebody goes, well, tow him. I go, how's a tow truck gonna get in here?
Yeah, really.
And that's just gonna create more of a mess. So, yeah, it needs to be, because they could have said, as much money as they probably made off that, they could have hired, they could have got a couple of high school kids and said, look, we'll give to your program, your football program or whatever, put them up front at that front entrance with vets just saying, no, restriction unless you're handicapped and there's a spot open, okay, you can park, you can go in, but if not, sorry, you know, no parking. And that would've been as easy as pie.
Yeah, they did have a, a couple of planning meetings, uh...
Well, I know me and Jerry Doctor, we talked, we want to go to them next year because...
Jerry didn't, wasn't invited either?
He said he wasn't invited either.
Because they were supposed to be invited.
Because he goes, well, I wanted a tent, he goes, I would have liked to have a tent set up for if somebody had heat stroke or...
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever, he goes, no, they didn't talk, because he was mad too.
Huh.
And, uh, he was driving his personal truck at first, then he went and got the fire trucks and nobody could get out of his way.
Yeah.
So I was like, oh, good idea. So he was driving his little fire truck around after that. We were, you know, we were all over, but, and then that walkway in showers by that shrub, first of all, the shrub needs to be taken out because they just kept pushing those cones into the road because they wanted to walk double instead of single. Well, then that limited that road and again, nobody got hurt or no wrecks, but it was close. So, I mean, they gotta, they should just rip out those shrubs and then they'd be fine, but you know how that is. The shrubs have probably been there since the beginning of time and they're like some historical thing, so... My two cents if I'm at the meeting is what will be said there, so, probably won't go over well, but anyhow, it's basically it. We got sixteen in our jail.
Sixteen, huh?
Seven of ours, nine are other people's. And, uh...
Oh, good.
We're dealing with this guy from MSU and hopefully gets somebody here to help with him, so...
And what, he was picked up on a...
He made some threats at the travel center.
Oh.
But he's having, he's clearly having some issues, so we have, we have a counselor coming in to talk to him.
Okay, so he's not any other agency he'd hold or want?
No, he's ours.
Okay.
But, so, um, yeah, oh, and then, yeah, so, I'll be gone Sunday through Sunday, Wayne will be in charge, so, um, and then the cameras for the cars get installed on Monday, on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday that we had bought. So they finally get, they start getting installed Tuesday morning, the eighth.
No, the Tuesday, they threw me off because it was June one Tuesday already, so I totally forgot about the...
So did I.
Town council meeting.
So did I until my phone chimed, I looked down and, oh, man!
I was gonna ask you if there was any interesting on their topics, but you didn't go either, so...
No, I need her to email me, I'm gonna tell her she needs to email me to remind me.
Yeah.
Kind of like how Don does, they check that out, they need to, she needs to be sent an agenda.
Yeah, it needs to be sent out. I sometimes have to scramble to find one and it's...
Right.
Hard, you gotta drive up to the office door and look at it posted on the window, otherwise I'd never know what it is.
The bell behind the church got stolen.
What church?
This big cat in Albertin.
Oh, really?
That church right there, whatever it is, that big building beside the gas pumps. Is that a church?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, there's a big cast iron bell in the back of it, weighs hundreds of pounds. Somebody hooked up to it, dragged it, did a loop with their vehicle and then went over this dirt mound to the other end and then when they did that, it popped it up and probably put it in the back of the truck and it drove off. So we're on the hunt for that, we've reached out to all the salvage yards and all that.
Was it a, a new valve they were planning on installing?
No, it was like an old one sitting there, but he said, you know, they would ring it. It weighs a ton, cast iron.
Huh.
You'd see where they just dug in the ground, they must have pulled it with chains and...
Really? When did that happen? What?
The other night.
Yeah.
So, and it had to have been loud, so we asked all the deputy, went to all the neighbors behind there and of course, nobody heard or saw anything, but had to have been, it had to have been chiming, you know, ding, you know, ringing, but...
Yeah.
You'd think somebody would've said, what's that? At two in the morning.
Yeah.
Mike, you get the signature to give, send it to me.
Yes, once, oh, when they sign, send it back, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Hello, why don't they also going good, huh?
So far, so good. We filled the jailer spot yesterday after the interview. Nice local guy, kid, young guy.
Mm-hmm.
So that's filled, so we just...
And now he's working on the dispatch.
Dispatching deputy.
Okay.
We put a, probably too expensive ads in the paper, I'm waiting for that, bills to come. If it's just a regular ad, it's like three or four bucks, so I can only imagine what adding photos and color is gonna do to us.
And you have three.
And we have three.
Yeah. On the, the sheriff had asked me about budget time and when Jessica might be able to help assist him with...
Right.
Getting, you know, up to par on, on that, because we'll be doing that in, end of June here. Do we know if Jessica, when she might start coming around to...
I think she's here often on, but I don't know, yeah, I'll talk to her.
When you get back from your Sunday to Sunday, we can text her if you want her to come down and give you a hand on filling that out.
Yeah, are we supposed to do that before July? Or do we start in July?
She usually sends them out at the end of June, doesn't she, Lori? And then the department director heads.
Well, we have some, some department head meeting, they sent out some email wanting us to meet on the eighteenth, I think it is or something.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's for the...
Salary or something.
Salary compensation board. Oh, salary compensation board. That's when, that's when members of the public, part of the board and us determine what, uh, what we can afford or what we should suggest for raises if any. Department director heads, you know, COLA increase, et cetera.
Uh-huh. I was telling, oh, I can't, so, I'm bringing it up later, can't say.
Oh.
Because it's not on, uh, I'm gonna call Mako on that thing I talked to you about yesterday, Lori, the marijuana thing.
Oh, yeah, mm-hmm.
Maybe you can fill them in on that.
Marijuana thing.
Um, that, um, you know, they're looking at putting a...
Dispensary.
Dispensary in St. Regis, but Mike heard that if, you know, that the marijuana thing passed, but if it didn't pass in the county, that we could...
Restrict.
Restrict it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Some...
He's gonna check with Mako and see if that's true.
Yeah, that's what, that's what John said, the governor had put out that...
Yeah, I heard something about it.
Individual counties, if, if the vote count was unapproved, then you guys could restrict and say, no, not in our county.
Right, because statewide it passed, but through the help of larger little cities like Missoula or Bozeman.
Right.
But then little counties like Mineral and Timbuktu and...
It didn't pass, right.
So then, yeah, they, they're leaving, the legislature passed a law that says if these counties voted it down overall in their election, then it's up to the local government to decide whether they allow, allow the dispensary.
Did we vote it down? Do we know?
Our county voted it.
I thought it did.
Yeah.
We'll have to check, but I thought it did.
Yeah, we'd have to check with Kalan to confirm.
Kalan would know, yeah.
Yeah.
I think. Now, I don't know how well it'd go over, he's the one guy at the Star Place is already, I think he's about ready to open, if he's not open already.
Yeah, and I hear there's another one going down there.
That's what I'm concerned about now.
And the Grove.
Yeah, which I'd like to, brakes on that.
You don't have much of a green thumb, huh?
Yeah.
So... Don't you ever cook with oregano?
Is that what that is?
All right.
Yeah, I guess.
Well, very good. Thank you much, Sheriff Tom.
Easy peasy.
We'll talk to you again, yeah. Okay, we got on the agenda with Andy and the Lepiers, road between Moats Lane and Roosevelt McKinley, an inquiry on purchasing.
Yeah, so back, back up a little bit, um, you know, since I've been here, every now and again, people come and they're like, hey, I wanna abandon this right away, um, you know, I think it started with Kit Muller and Salties, right, those old town sites, right, you got these, got these right aways that are in the creek or, you know, crazy places. Um, and I saw, I got so many of them that, um, I wanted to document the process so people understood what they were gonna be involved with. Um, and so, that's what you guys have in front of you. Um, it's basically like, you know, here's how you do it. Um, and there's a lot of, uh, right, there's, there's a fee and then there's, there's just a lot of steps to the application. And so, Rhonda came to me and she was like, she, she had developed an application based on this letter and she was like, hey, does this look good? And I said, you know, it probably makes sense before you go, I didn't quite know how to, the mechanics of it, how to handle this, so I said, it might probably make sense to go to the commissioners and ask them if they're even interested in selling anything in the first place, right, like, like, you know, before you kind of go down this road. Get some idea from you if, if this is even a, you know, if it's even a starter. Um, so anyway, that's what, that's what, uh, that's what I showed up for.
And all this is in the county, not the city, right? Everything's in the county?
This is in the county, yeah. It's across from the, I believe you guys donated the stuff between Moats Lane and Fifth Avenue, I think Fifth Avenue turns into Moats Lane.
Yeah.
When it makes the curve.
Yeah.
Right there, about the property we're inquiring about. I believe the county donated that to the hospital where the, um, golf courses.
Uh-huh.
So I think, I think at one time that might've been included in part of that, I'm not sure, but...
Yeah, so it's this little corner where Moats Lane kind of is the current road right there and it's this weird little road that's supposed to be there and this corner and we own that Oliverville property right there.
Right.
So we were thinking about putting a mini storage or something along those lines there, but we were interested in buying it from the county if you guys were interested in selling.
So, yeah, so that's Fifth, Fifth Avenue right away. Um, and I, I wasn't here for the, the bus barn, like the most recent bus barn conversations. Um, so I don't know, did you, I don't know if you guys saw those, those layouts that...
For the bus barn?
Yeah. Looks like they kind of situated stuff because they've got Sixth Avenue right away, they've got...
Right.
McKinley Avenue right away, so they were trying to avoid all that.
They were trying to make it so that if the road, if Moats Lane ever went away, then it would still be on a, on a town plat road.
Right.
I think they were trying to make their driveway still be accessible if that ever got straightened out.
Yeah, so this is Fifth Avenue, um, and you know, yeah, you know, Moats Lane just kind of jogs off.
Right.
And, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure of the status of that, but I think what you guys have told me is it just, that's kind of how the road kind of went and that's what people started driving on.
People started driving on it, yeah.
Yeah. So this is that, where, where Mo, Moats Lane veers Fifth Avenue is, is a right away right there and it's, and it's a, and it basically chops off that corner, it's, you know, it continues on, it would continue on straight.
But I think Fifth Avenue, if you continued it straight, it'd go behind all those parcels. So if you went straight down Fifth Avenue through the, this area that we're referring to, I think it'd be behind, not in front of the Mormon church and all those houses.
Oh, okay.
Going down towards Steve Unruh's.
Right.
So it'd kind of be like a...
I mean, if we did this?
I don't, yeah, I don't know how they'd ever make the road and go straight on Fifth Avenue because it'd be, you know, I think the Mormon church and most of those people have turned those into yards and garden lots.
So that, that doesn't quite grab it, I just, you know, that was the, that was the most recent mapping that anyone's done, so I just, I just grabbed that since the bus barn was, was also kind of struggling with this, what's, you know, with these, with these existing right aways.
Do you still have my coat? Put the coats in.
But essentially, so what someone... But essentially, so what someone has to do is, they have to petition you. And that would come through my office, and so I would just make sure that they had, um, that they, that they, they met, they had, they had everything we needed to review the actual petition. And so, yeah, I mean, just kinda go through it. And I gave them a, an example petition letter. But if there's any utilities in the area, they have to be vacated. If there's any easements for utilities, they have to be maintained. If, if, a notification requesting a comment from any utility company, if, right, if they, they're like, hey, now we're, we're gonna use that for something, you know, they, they would comment back. If they need access to the rightaway. Adjoning landowners would be not notified of any potential rightaway abandonment. Because this is within a mile of an incorporated town, the town would be notified. If you guys were interested in selling it, they would, they'd be responsible for a surveyor, surveying the area, showing the, you know, basically, a plat would be created, showing this, you know, rightaway abandonment. Any deeds, any deeds, all the, all the normal stuff that would go along with that would be bore by the applicant. Any cost of advertising, utility locate, survey, examination fees, depreparation, any other necessary costs would be bore by the applicant. And then typically, I don't know how, how it's been handled on that pass, but I just said typically a unit cost per square foot would be negotiated. And I, and, you know, I, that, that, there are many ways to do that, right? Do you get it appraised, do you, you know, what's the going rate? You know, if you're interested, right, kinda thing. Anyway. But before that, you know, I thought before going to all that trouble, they could, folks could come and say, you know, like Kent Muller, right, I think he approached you before that Salties one, it's like, he's like, look at this thing, you know, and. Sometimes it makes a whole lot of sense, sometimes it's like, oh, you know, I don't know, sometimes it's like, no way.
Right. Is that, is there any semblance of a road on Fifth currently, or just grass and yard?
Yes.
It goes, yeah, there's nothing there.
Just grass, yeah.
Yeah.
I've put some stuff of, like when we dug the foundation for the house, I tried to put it on my portion, but.
Something's.
Jason's put, um, road sweepings up there, cause it's convenient. And, uh, and actually, we, I'm not sure, you can put them up there, good, we use them, so.
So what, approximately is the area you're.
It's, it's teeny, really.
I have a picture of it.
Oh, yeah, twenty by forty, or?
Oh, it's, well, it's gonna be like a triangle.
Oh.
No, cause that's, that's kinda where Fifth Avenue curves and starts turning into Moats Lane.
Okay.
I don't know where, I'm assuming it turns into Moats Lane after Roosevelt, I think is the last road out there. And I'm not sure how it'll be after you figure out the easement for the roadway, obviously that's probably gonna be thirty feet from center line, both directions, I think at least.
Is that what it is, Andy? Sixty foot total, thirty and thirty?
That rightaway?
Or is it an old fashioned one that's not that big?
I think it's.
It's that way out. Yeah, let me see if it's.
It's kinda similar to what we did on Sherla, made it shorter, and we bought the little bit in front of, you know.
Right.
Our house.
Cause Sherla was a hundred foot easement, I think, historically, that was that road that they were gonna put horse drawn rail cars or something, they were the big plan.
Back in the day?
Yeah.
They're pretty big rightaways. Um, I can't remember if they're like, I know there's at least sixty, sixty foot rightaways. They might be ninety, I can't, I'd have to go look at the plats, the plats again, but.
I think towards our, and Fourth Avenue is a sixty foot easement, if I remember right.
Yeah, they're, they're all sixty footers.
And then Andy is the planner guy of what, uh, I'll probably go out there and look at it later, they just, I think, I pretty much remember how it goes, but. What, what's, Moats Lane now has been in use for many, many years, and, you know, there's legal easements, and then there's kinda prescriptive easements, and the people have been using that as their way to get to and from their house for X amount, I mean, is your opinion now that Moats Lane is kind of established and, and there really is no longer a need to even worry about hanging on to Fifth? In, in terms of that particular little small area where Fifth is kind of abandoned?
You know, I think that would, um, it really would depend on what the Moats family is proposing over there. Cause there's a whole town site over there, you know? And I know they're selling like a couple parcels closest to the, um, closest to the Gulf Horse Road.
Towards the river, right?
Towards the river.
Down, below Dan Fowler.
But that's still accessible from the other streets, is it not?
That's accessible from Fort Thaw.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I. You know, I think.
Well, what if the Moats family said, no, we don't want Moats Lane used anymore, start using Fifth? Would, what, what, I mean?
No, I don't, no, I think, I think it just, what I, the, the. The idea would be is if, if, yeah, if, say sewer waters run back there. And they start developing it.
Yeah.
They would, you know, they would develop it along, you know, within, along, like as if it's got that road system back there. I, you know, looking at this specific area, you know, I, good question. I don't know if, you know, Moats Lane kind of, you know, it kinda chops up the county property there. I don't, you know, I don't know if that's exactly what you want. You know, giving up rightaways, right, it's gone, then it's gone, you know, not getting it back. So that's always, that's always something to consider. Yeah, I, I haven't really like studied it to be like, yeah, what, what, you know, what's the, what's the future of this area down here? I know the Moats family, um. That, I think forever they were thinking about just keeping that in the family, but I think they're starting to think about, you know, now they're, now they're starting to think about selling.
Can I show you, Roman?
Yeah.
So this is Onyx. So that's, this is Fifth Avenue, right?
Mm-hmm.
Hospital, this is the, you gave this to the hospital.
Right.
So Fifth Avenue continued out, it'd be right behind the parking lot at the Mormon church. And through all these, I mean, that's Steve Umru's house. Now, obviously Onyx, the, the lines aren't only always perfectly accurate.
And actually, this is, this is the part, so that it's still accessible from whatever that north south road is.
Yeah, cause there's Fifth Avenue, and that's all our stuff.
Well, what's the one coming this way?
That's roads, um, McKinley.
And the next one over, is there one more over?
There's no roads. McKinley's the last road up.
Oh, the north south road, okay.
Yeah. So that's Fowler.
Gotcha.
That little. We have that little shed right there. It's right there. So it'd just be this little piece right here.
Right, okay.
But, yeah, yeah, I know, you know, I don't know how this would ever be.
Well, and.
Cause you'd get to, if Moats subdivided this, they'd come out Fourth Avenue straight. Cause there's, if you, you know, Dan Fowler has that little road right at the end of Fourth Avenue. And this is the part I think they've got, starting to be subdivided. You wanna see that?
Okay, so right now we're just here to decide what, Andy?
Uh, I think, I don't, you don't decide anything.
So you're actually just kind of a jury?
Uh, yeah, yeah, no, no action to be taken, it was just, uh.
They're asking if we're interested.
Yeah, yeah, if, if, if you're interested in selling this, um, you know, without, you know, without negotiating a price, or, you know, seeing all the details or any of that stuff.
Right.
It's just kinda like, hey, you know, what do you, what do you think about selling that over there, kinda thing, you know? It's like you got a, you know, like an old Honda Accord sitting over there or something, you know? So, yeah, you, you, you don't have to decide anything. Think about, go take a look at it, think about it, more discussions.
Yeah.
You know, I, it was, it was more just, uh, trying to figure out the logistics of how to do these, where, before they pay a fee and submit, do a bunch of work.
Right, for nothing.
Yeah, get some idea that, are you, you know, is this even a.
Possibility.
Possibility, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Well, yeah, well, we have kind of a busy day this afternoon, I'll probably go out there and look at it, maybe even visit with you again more. Andy, are you gonna be around today, or are you off doing field work?
Uh, you know, I don't even, good question.
Okay.
My morning was focused on this, and now I gotta go figure out what I'm.
Okay.
What's your most urgent?
Yeah, what's the next fire?
All right. Okay, well, what kind of a timeline are you guys looking for a response?
Oh, we're not.
Okay.
We've been thinking about it for years, just we never, you know, really weren't in a position to buy it, and then.
Okay.
We were just kinda like, we see a need for maybe some storage and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And so, and then at least it'd be on the county, if you're making taxes on it, so, um, you know, you're not making any money on it now.
Right. Sounds good. All right, thanks guys.
Thanks.
All right. Got Liz Bradley and Company and.
Down below, I put a little arrow there.
Wildlife Habitat Improvement Project, Fish Creek. That's off the table, whoever wants to be closer, we're, we're not too formal here.
Am I gonna be able to put some slides up?
Yeah, I think, well, ask Dawn about that.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can I, um, put some slides up? I have my laptop, I was gonna.
Yes, of course, yeah, all the hookups are right there.
Connecting right here, okay.
Yeah, yeah, right there by that chair there.
How you doing? Good, good, how you doing?
Have you signed it?
I've been staying out of trouble, hi Lynn. Mostly, mostly, yeah. Even Mike? No.
How are you?
Good.
Good.
See, what are you gonna do, forty years before you retire?
I might do for, oh, I already did forty.
You ought to own this agency by now.
I'm trying, I got, I got quite an investment.
I thought it was called Mike Wildlife and Parks. It's an installment, installment package.
Depends on the day, some days it sounds pretty good, and some days, no, it's not me.
Yeah, so I, I know Liz and Randy and Mike and.
I'm Kim, I'm from, actually Helena, I'm, I'm the whip coordinator for the state.
Oh, okay. And I'm Roman, Dwayne, Lori, and then we got, you know those guys in the back from, Dave Brink from the extension?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just hiding behind you.
He hasn't been here quite forty years either.
Only twenty-four.
Only twenty-four?
I, I had a ways to go.
Well, the last ones are easier than the first.
Are they?
Yeah.
Oh my, thank God.
You don't have to be there anymore. So while she's getting it ready, what, what is exactly whip, I'll make room of that, but.
Well, I can go ahead and kinda do, um, overall, big picture of the program for you guys, just like a FYI. And I brought some brochures and a fact sheet, has a lot of the similar information, except the fact sheet has more background information. So. So it's a relatively new program. In twenty seventeen, uh, the Kelly Flynn introduced. Legislation to, um, create the Wildlife Habitat Improvement Act. So in twenty seventeen is when this act was passed by the legislative session. It sunsets in twenty twenty-three, but Fish, Wildlife and Parks can go back to the legislative session and get it.
Re-upped.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah, so, and at that point, we might be able to make some changes, um, maybe add an administrative fee, or add, um, costs associated with monitoring, there's some things that have come up, of course, um, over the first five, or, you know, the first part of the, the, um, program that you, you, you just find out information where you're like, oh, this might be something we can change in future, but, um, but overall, the project, or the program has up to two million dollars to award out. And it's funded through, um, they're called Pittman Roberts Stallers, so it's the excise tax on, um.
Firearms ammunition?
Yep, mm-hmm, um, and turns out archery equipment too, so. And so obviously that comes into a large, um, pile of money, and then it's awarded to the state FWP's, and then my little program gets a, a, allotted a portion of that. It is a competitive grant process, and everybody applies online. And the projects can be up to five years, so I encourage folks that do apply for a grant to go up to five years, cause there's a lot of paperwork in there. So it's like, if you're gonna go through it, it's, it's a, um, it is a process, because, uh, just the way of the programs designed is they have to, a project sponsor has to apply to FWP, we have an advisory council that reviews those applications and scores them. And then makes recommendations to the director of FWP. And then FWP has to submit a grant application to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And so they have up to ninety days to get back to us to say, yes, we'll fund the project, so. It's kind of a lengthy, um, process, and then there's also, um, two agreements that our subrecipient slash project sponsors have to, um, sign. And it's a subrecipient agreement, which covers the money portion of their project. And then they have a program agreement that covers the monitoring portion of the project, because their vegetation monitoring goes, um, longer than the, the money does, so. They're, um, they're signing up for a commitment, but on the other hand, they can, a project sponsor can, um, develop these programs on a watershed scale. And they've got the funds there for five years, so, you know, if they do get funded, they don't have to come back to the council and, and ask for more money, they, they have their money and, and can do weed control for that five-year timeframe, so that's kind of the, um, really cool part of it. It's called Wildlife Habitat Improvement because, um, the focus, of course, of the noxious weed treatment is for priority. is for priority wildlife habitat. So either, um, you know, and Liz will probably talk about this a little bit more, but, um, uh, winter habitat for deer and elk, um, it can be for sage grouse, you know, it, it's, and, and the treatments have to be in that priority wildlife habitat areas. And then, of course, it's, um, limited to priority wildlife species, which those are the two, um, uh, I guess more critical definitions. And that's why it's both in the brochure and on the fact sheet. Because, uh, the wildlife's, priority wildlife species, um, that can qualify for the habitat or upland or wild game or mammals, wild bird or mammals, um, that are either species of conservation concern or game species that are recognized by the state of Montana for their ecological and economic and recreational value. So it covers a wide range of, of wildlife species. But it is, the whole purpose of it is to, um, help get these, obviously, noxious weeds under control and better have wildlife habitat for those, um, species. And then the other part of the grant program is it's a 75-25 match. So the grant, uh, program will pay up to 75% of the cost of the eligible grant expenditures, which are, you know, normal, um, noxious weed treatments, so herbicides, contracted services for a commercial applicator, biocontrol, reseeding, and then we've got this, um, grazing improvement, um, treatment for the program as well. And it pays for a portion of, of that, um, grazing improvement. You'd have to have a plan on what you're going to do and how you're going to manage your animals. But, um, there is that option if, if a project decides to go that route. Another requirement is that these projects do have to have public hunting, um, access on a portion of the project. And that's because of where the project dollars come from, from Pittman Roberts. Our hunters are paying these, um, this additional tax. And so, um, not every landowner has to have, of course, public hunting, but, um, that is a, a scoring criteria on, that the, um, advisory council looks through as they score on that and whatnot, so. And so, um, the program was started in 2018. We had our first three projects in 20, or, sorry, 2017, first three projects in 2018. And then we had four more projects in 2019, which is, um, the project that Liz is going to talk about, the, um, Fish and, Fish and Nemocreek project. And it's one of our larger projects in, uh, the projects that, the WIP projects that we do have. Certainly more complex with the number of partners in the project. I have, um, four different subrecipient agree, or subrecipients. So I actually have eight agreements because two agreements for each entity, and that's Mineral County, the Forest Service, Fish, Wildlife and Parks, we have an agreement with ourselves. And then, of course, um, DNRC is also in, involved in that project as well, so. And we're, the, it's moving forward and we've got, um, good contractors on the ground. And because of last year, COVID was kind of, made things kind of awkward and funky. So, um, Mineral County will be kind of tackling more of treatments this year, which is exciting to see for, um, the private landowners. So the project obviously includes private, private landowners, um, federal and state partners as well, so. And then even though I have individual agreements with these, um, four entities that they have to report back to me, Fish, Wildlife and Parks takes those, um, accomplishments and combines them into, uh, one report because we have to report back to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service on our one grant. So, um, that's what I do is gather the accomplishment, accomplishments from the, um, four subrecipients. And then I'm able to report that back to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Project or Service as one project. So, yeah, it's, um, it's a, it's a cool program and excited to, you know, have more projects across the state. Use these dollars to control our noxious weeds. Are there any questions that you guys have about just kind of general?
So it's primarily to a system with, uh, noxious weeds, that's mostly the projects are funding that?
Yep, mm-hmm, yeah, so it is. But again, it's through whether they do herbicide or reseeding or, um, biocontrol. And of course, there is a grazing component to that as well, if that fits their need, because these are such, we like to see them, um, like a watershed scale, like Fish Creek is, that even though we have an interstate going through it, it's still a really large area that, um, this one's kind of cool too because, um, FWP and DNRC are working together on the same contractor to treat, um, both properties. So that's, uh, I think, super encouraging and, and cool to see as well.
So this is a really great opportunity for us, when this WIP project came up, the opportunity to apply for it. And we thought that, that Fish Creek and Nemocreek was really just like the perfect area to do these treatments. They want landscape level projects with multiple partners. You know, we claimed recent ownership in 2010 of what used to be corporate timberland, lots of roads, lots of weeds, as you all know. And we weren't going to be able to tackle it with any one, tackle it with any one of our individual budgets. So a three-to-one match was huge, you know, it makes our money go really far on that. So, um, so we, we pulled together everybody and sat down at the table and kind of worked out how we wanted to tackle it and put together the application that we, that we submitted towards this and got it, got awarded over $700,000 of money that we can then match with our money, so over a million dollars is what we have over five years to, to spend in these, in these two areas. Um, and then Dave Brink and I kind of serve as co-sponsors on the grant. So me representing FWP and kind of that end of it, just because we have so much ownership within that, that drainage that the majority of the treatments are going to be happening on the wildlife management area. So what I was going to do is kind of give you an overall update, more specifics about the project and what we're, what we're kind of, you know, seeking to accomplish out there, but also what we've already done, because we're in year two now. So we got a lot of work done in, um, in last, last summer's field season. This is a report that Kim actually put together for us at the end of, end of last year. It just kind of has some, some of the basic info. And then, so up here, I've got a map of the, of the overall project area. So it's outlined in red, so you can see it does, it does span both sides of the interstate to include kind of that Nemocreek watershed as well as, um, a good chunk of the, of the Fish Creek watershed. So as, as Kim said, our, our project partners, um, or us, Fish, Wildlife and Parks, but what's actually unique is that it includes wildlife, so the wildlife area, um, fisheries, so because we have fishing access sites within it, and then state parks as well. So we're working internally as well as partners on this project. DNRC, U.S. Forest Service, and of course Mineral County. And the overall project area is 128,000 acres and our plan is to treat close to 25,000 of those acres. With either, with a combination of herbicide treatments, so we're estimating, you know, over 12,000 acres to be treated with herbicide, over 800 acres to be reseeded, because we're not just trying to kill weeds, we're trying to actually, you know, improve native vegetation. We're trying to improve that habitat for wildlife. And so that's why we have quite a bit of reseeding, um, in this grant as well. And then a lot of the area, um, that's inaccessible to spraying, uh, we've budgeted quite a bit for biocontrol, so putting bugs out there on some of the main bee species. So we started, we got the project approved in fall of 2019. We still needed to kind of get some contracts in place, so most of our work, the, the state park had a contract in place. They were able to do some work that first fall, but most of our work, the first full year was in 2020 with both the spring and fall, um, treatments that, that took place. And then the project will conclude in spring of, of '24. So as Kim mentioned, the, the goal is to treat priority wildlife habitats. You know, really, this whole drainage has got priority wildlife habitats. Majority of it is winter range for mule deer, whitetail deer, um, elk and moose throughout that. And especially those south-facing slopes, which we're really interested in, that provide that forage in the winter. You know, we're putting a special focus on that, you know, less so on the north-facing, more forested slopes, which are going to shade out weeds eventually, or already starting to in the process. And then also it improves habitat by replacing that with native vegetation and improves habitat for a bunch of other species. Black bears, upland game birds, we have a lot of dusky grouse in that drainage, as well as reptile grouse, uh, small mammals, variety of birds, reptiles and amphibians. And then within our own state wildlife action plan, Fish Creek is actually a, um, a tier-one terrestrial focal area. So it's been identified as a really important area for wildlife connectivity as well, for wildlife moving north and south, but also even just the game that migrates kind of from higher to lower, um, elevations. So there's a lot of, of movement in there as well that kind of made this, you know, more of a important area for focus. So I'm sure you've seen a lot of the weeds out there in that area and you probably are familiar. But the big one, spotted knappweed, uh, we have that all over St. John's Wort. That has really come on in the last 10 years. And so, and it just is very widespread in some places, so that's one we're definitely putting a focus on. Leafy spurge as well, so leafy spurge on the north side of the interstate is a huge problem in the Nemocreek area. Luckily, we don't have as much of a problem in the actual Fish Creek drainage, but we do have a patch of it on the state park. So that is a real big focus to try to, if we can get rid of that, or at least really contain that and keep it contained so it doesn't spread in the rest of the drainage.
That part in the state park, is that near the river?
It's up near, uh, Seer Peak and that Hay Creek area.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
It's around that way up there.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, it's, it's always a mystery sometimes. Usually you'd think on the main road drainage and along the creek, you'd see it because they really grow along the creek. But definitely trying to be vigilant for where it might show up elsewhere. And that's part of that, to look for new invaders as they show up and just try to get rid of them, um, before they become a bigger problem. And then we have, to a lesser degree, we have sulfur stink foil, houndstongue, it just can be locally patchy. Especially in Nemocreek, it has more diversity of weeds up there. Chee grass, um, mullein. As we started this project and we're going out and looking at some of these places, we unfortunately found vent nada, which is an annual grass that's a new invader and can be really problematic. And so, uh, we're, um, wish we'd kind of known more about it. I think, I don't know when it showed up, but we're, we're trying to kind of figure out ways to address that as part of this, uh, this grant as, as well. And then there's like oxide daisy and tanzy, you know, you'll see that along the creek corridor as well. So plenty to work on there. Also, as Kim mentioned, we, FWP, we got together with DNRC to, to do our contracting on this. Just, it just provides a much better efficiency for us to be able to work together on this. It's a process, certainly to put together a five-year contract for weed spraying. So we put that up to bid, um, for both herbicide and reseeding. And, uh, the, it was awarded to Mountain Valley Plant, which is Nick and Sarah Holden. And they're the ones that have been actually working in the Fish Creek drainage historically for a number of years. So that actually worked out well because they really were familiar with the areas. I mean, Nick knows where, where things are, he knows, you know, where he's seen certain weeds before, so that his expertise has been really helpful. And he's always on the lookout for new invaders. He did find an area with hawkweed last year that he's going to hit this, this summer as well, um, and try to get, get rid of that. And then with the biocontrol, uh, we're doing two different contracts with that. We tried to contract as much of it as we could with, actually, Missoula County Weed District because they have this youth and restoration program where, um, they've got a bunch of, you know, younger kids out there, so it's kind of an educational opportunity as well. But we do pay them, they give us a pretty reasonable rate to go both put out bugs and help with the monitoring, which I'll talk about in a, in a minute. And then for the rest of it that they weren't able to do, we put out a contract to bid for commercial, just to buy bugs. And there's not a lot of people that sell bugs for St. John's Wort, and so that one's a little bit harder to, to find. But there's one integrated weed control in, in Bozeman that's been awarded that, that contract. That one's just going into place this year, so, um, and, and we're just putting out those bugs ourselves and doing that, that monitoring. So we have a lot of bugs that we're trying to, to get out there as well and hit some more inaccessible sites. For, um, back to the herbicide spraying, uh, we're hitting within the Fish, Wildlife and Parks lands and DNRC, we're doing the fishing sites every year, those are getting sprayed every year. DNRC has 400 acres, they're treating, uh, state park, again, with definitely a focus on that leafy spurge patch. They're trying to hit that, really every spray in fall if they can, depending on conditions. Because fall, like this last fall, just turned out not to be, didn't work out really well for, for spraying.
Yeah, that can't be killed yet, right, just controlled.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, the idea is to keep it from, from spreading. Yeah, eliminating it probably is, might be high aspirations, for sure. It just has such a deep taproot, it's just really, really hard to, to get. But with that repeated spraying like that, both spring and fall, that's huge. I think we have a better chance of, um, definitely shrinking it. And Nick feels like already that he's gotten some of that under control.
Making a difference.
That is looking better, so that's really positive. And then we're treating close to 3,500 acres spraying on the WMA itself, so. A lot we're doing there. And we have, our strategy is really, we're doing the open roads, we're hitting all the open roads at least every other year, and some of them probably every year, but we're making sure that we hit those pretty repeatedly because that's where you get the new invaders, right, I mean, everyone's driving on those. Tons of closed roads in that area as well, so, um, we're trying to hit all of those at least once, you know? So we're kind of, Nick's moving around and, and kind of hitting parts of it for all the areas that he can drive with any TV and spray of those closed roads, and where he can't, we're doing the, the biocontrol. So as I said, kind of prioritizing any new invaders, um, those priority wildlife habitats, which I'll just kind of show you a couple of slides of that as well. Low prioritization on those areas that are already growing back and forested. Those are already shading out, like I said. And then any of this leafy spurge, if we can find a smaller St. John's Wort infestation that we can contain, then Nick will try to, um, kind of create a boundary around that and shrink it. That's a picture of the, some of the spurge on the state park. So it's on that real dry, exposed, you know, stuff around Hay Creek and, um, and Seer Peak that's kind of interspersed with ponderosa in there. Another one of our priority areas for wildlife is Freeze Out Gulch, so that's really good, uh, winter habitat for elk and mule deer. There's quite a few mule deer in that, in that area. And we have a lot, a lot of St. John's Wort in there especially, um, as well as, as knappweed, um, for sure. So we're definitely working, we did some bug releases in there last year as well, as Nick started some spraying, but he's hitting it harder this year. Deer Creek as well, um, you know, Deer Creek, not only after, like post-logging, but it had that big fire that went through that just really, you know, nuked it and just created perfect conditions for weeds to grow. Still, it is aptly named, I mean, there's tons of deer in there, I think we could have more. And as that, as the trees start to come back, I think we'll see elk come back to use it too. There just isn't enough cover right now to, to hold elk. But we're trying to get a handle in that area as well. And I think we can, you know, see some big changes, but it's pretty obvious when you drive up the bottom, there, there's tons of shrubs in there and then the shrubs are really starting to come back, that's really good forage. But I think we can get better grasses in there as well. And then the reseeding part of this, um, you know, a lot of this is happening along some of these roads to kind of, again, it just kind of helps keep those weeds from reestablishing too, if you can get some native vegetation in there. And then flat areas as well, so Nick reseeded last fall, um, we bought that. We bought that Cook property down in the bottom, where's Brownie lived in there. That flat area that used to be a log deck, you know, and there's lots of weeds in there. So he sprayed that and reseeded that whole thing last year. We looked at it this spring and it actually looks pretty good. We're seeing some good recruitment. So he's, you know, that's an easy one too to keep an eye on, but it's a really great test site to see how that, that seed that we bought. We're using a NATO grass orb mix that had already been used by the nature conservancy out here. And so we kind of were able to go back 10 years later and see what worked, which was really nice. And then we developed a new seed mix based on what we saw that we thought would be most successful out here. And so far, Nick says, everything he's seen is looking really good there, so that's good. So one problem area we're going to focus on is the Camilla Gulch area. This is an area we found vent nada, so we're really concerned about it. Because vent nada, you know, where in other places, I mean, you can say probably a lot more about this than I can, Kim, but it's, it seems like when it really gets a hold, it can really take off and, and, and spread quickly. And we have some illegal ATV use in here, as you can see. And so the concern here is that that's, that's just spreading that seed even further up the hillsides in there. And so what we want to do is really put some extra effort in here and rehab it. And so we want to temporarily fence it while we treat it. So we want to spray it and reseed it. We have some signage even that we're putting up in there to kind of tell people what we're trying to accomplish and what vent nada is too, so they kind of know about it. But anyway, this is a, this is one focal area that we're hoping to, to make a difference there. And that's vent nada, it's just this annual grass. It's kind of hard to identify. We've all kind of struggled with it. It's, you can think it's cheetgrass if you don't look real close at it.
Or something like this, so you just don't pay attention to it. It's not anything that catches your eye really.
It's, it's not, it's not something new in Mineral County. It's been around for years, but we just never looked at it. We always overlooked it as just another annual grass, it's not a problem, don't worry about it. But once we were kind of tuned into it, we started looking, yeah, we find it everywhere. And it's, it's a challenge.
Yeah, so it's.
Now that's, now that it's actually, the other caveat with it is that it is an actual noxious weed listed and required for treatment by the state. Whereas cheetgrass is a restricted plant, there, there's not so much requirements on it. I mean, it's, it's good to treat, but you're not statutorily required to treat cheetgrass. Whereas vent nada you are.
Yeah, we're just trying to kind of work with, within the grant, we're limited to what we wrote into the grant for, for herbicides. You know, because we have to do, we had to do an EIS on that, right? So everything had to be pre-approved. We can use plateau on this, which is what we have in, in the grant. But there's some other, you know, newer herbicides that sound like that might be more promising. But we're looking into what we can do with the grant. But definitely something we're going to be, we're trying to wrap arms around and figure out how widespread it is.
That new one that Liz is alluding to, Roman, are the ones that we've talked about in the weed, weed board meetings. That's the indazoplam, the esplanade that we tried the treatments on that worked very well. And then the rejuvra label, which has come out now with a little more wider use. It's got a grazing, grazing label on it. Challenge with that is that you, you can't reseed with that product because it affects the germinating root of seed. So if you're reseed, rehabbing an area, you throw the seed down, if you use rejuvra or indazoplam, you're not going to get those seeds to establish, so.
Can you, can you plant it later and it'll establish?
You, you can plant it, depending upon how long the indazoplam sits in the soil. It can, it can sit there four or five years.
Oh, wow.
So, and that's, that's depending upon soil type, conditions, a whole lot of things. So that's kind of why we've got those test plots out on the interstate stuff where, where we know they're not doing much active management with it. So we're going to kind of see how, how long. So for future projects and future use, it may be a better tool to bring into something. But yeah, if you have, if you have good perennial grasses there, it's, it's an excellent product to take out the annual grasses and a lot of perennials to, to reestablish and fill in. But if you're trying to reseed into a more disturbed area, it's, it's not, not the tool you want to be using, so. But there are other things, they just require more treatments, more often, more vigilance and timing. Timing with annual grasses is, is everything. If you are off by a week or two, you've lost it for that year, so. So it's tricky. We just kind of figure it out.
Yeah, we were not, we were not happy to find it, as we've been seeing it. So the biocontrol, like I said, we're working through Missoula County's Youth and Restoration Crew. This is up at Deer Creek where we did some releases last year for napweed. So this is one of these, these closed roads that Nick can't get up with an ATV. So tons of napweed and we put out quite a few releases up in there. And then Bert Lindler, who I want to mention, you know, you know him from Mineral County Resource Coalition, but he's, he's a volunteer on this project. He's really been instrumental to, to volunteer his time towards even helping us put the grant together, but administering parts of it. And he's helped with this piece where we're getting the, the biocontrol from a commercial, you know, independent contractor. We have to put those bugs out ourselves. And we also have a part-time employee, Mike Hathaway. He used to be the state park manager for Fish Creek, he's retired now. We were able to bring him back part-time too, to help be kind of the field coordinator for us, for FWP. And so, so Bert and Mike have really been instrumental to help, to help us with, you know, some of this extra workload of, of doing this and some of the monitoring as well. But this is up in Freeze Out Gulch last fall. We were up in there hitting some of this St. John's Wort. There's two different bugs we use up there, the chrysalina, which is a beetle. And then there's an inchworm as well that is a little harder to, to get. But we're hoping that, we're hoping we can get everything that we're, we've ordered from the Bozeman outfit. It just kind of depends on the season too and how good they can find it.
Yeah, opinion is on how successful the bugs are working? You know, I always wonder if they stay alive, do they end up dying in the climate or are they, are they making a dent?
I think with the napweed, there's some pretty good data. And we've seen places where they, they do, they take time. It can take up to 10 years, I think. And you know, Dave or Kim, you guys know way more about this than, than I do. I feel like the St. John's Wort is a little harder, but I don't know. You guys want to speak to that?
You know, the insects they're releasing are already up there and they're in Fish Creek. Just not in great numbers to have much of an impact. When they first started the chrysalina beetle releases in the 60s on the, on the bison range, once the insects reached their, their, their peak populations to where there was a noticeable effect on the St. John's Wort, it was quite dramatic. And you saw the, the St. John's Wort populations on the bison range crash for two or three years, which in a typical predator-prey relationship, as, as Liz relates, once the, the prey gets to a certain population, the predators are kind of behind them, their populations increase. If the prey population crashes, the predator population crashes. And then there's a trough and then the prey population starts to increase. So, so we see this across Mineral County on the west end all the time. I mean, we'll see some drainages where there'll be lots of St. John's Wort. Couple of years later, there'll be millions of chrysalina beetles in there. The plants will just be black, shiny black with all the beetles that are on them. And they defoliate, they eat it down, strip it down to the ground. And then they either move over to the next drainage or their population crashes. And then four or five years after that, because there's been no damage to the root. That's, that's the problem with a lot of the biocontrols is there's no actual damage to the root. So they, they suppress the plants, they make them weaker. Hopefully they open it up to, to other, to damage by just natural rots or funguses that come in and enter into these weaker, weakened plants and then reduce them. That's what a lot of the research towards spotted napweed has shown. That with all the biocontrols, they make the plants weaker, they're more susceptible to, you know, they're just weaker plants. They don't survive as well. They, you know, they die out from frost, they die out from natural pathogens that are present. And then there's, because in, in the spotted napweed, there's insects that are attaching the seeds, attaching the, the stem, attacking the root. So there's multiple points of, of control in that. And with St. John's Wort, we have three insects, two of which are, are proper for this area. And, and there's, there's not as much damage they do to it. So it, it tends to run in, in peaks and, or in cycles. You know, you'll have good years, bad years, good years, bad years. And so it's, it's not a cure for it, but it is a management tool that, that, you know, has, has some use, so.
Yeah, so we're hoping the combination of all these treatments, I mean, that's the goal. That's why we're kind of throwing all these things at it. You know, we're spraying a lot of this too with the bugs. We just hope we can, we can knock it, knock it back. And then, oh, we're also putting out leafy spurge bugs as well up in, up in Nemothe Creek. So that's a, that's another area that we're, we're focusing on. So part of the grant requirement is, is monitoring. And so to be able to, which makes sense, we want to know if it works to be able, at the end of all this, to, to be able to say something. So for, for each treatment, we need to have a monitoring plot, which is a transect like you see here, where you're kind of taking information along the way. So this is a great educational opportunity and so we've kind of plugged in the youth and restoration crew to help with this. And Bert himself has been helping us kind of keep this data together. We also reached out to Iowa State. They've got that conservation education camp, they've got classes in there in the summer. You know, Bert really made that happen with, you know, trying to connect to them like, hey, you know, this could be one of your courses, you know, that you go out and do some of these plots and they can learn about some of the native plant species. They weren't able to do that last year because they canceled other classes. So it was a little more of a scramble on our end to get those monitoring plots set up. But they're back this summer, so they should be, be able to help with, with that again. So that, that seemed like a really good solution. That actually helped make our grant more competitive too. They see an educational component in there, I think was one of the things that we brought up. Okay, so what have we done so far? And the, this handout I gave you is a map of the treatments that we accomplished in 2020. It's on the back of that, so you can kind of see there's a, there's a legend there that can kind of walk you through it. But the Forest Service herbicide treatments are, on the roads are in that light yellow. So Karen Stockman with the Forest Service is the one leading that up. So she got quite a bit done in there. She also has an aerial spraying treatment that they did in Burdette Creek. And this is one I'm particularly excited about because of that winter range for elk in there. They're going to burn that as well, it's a separate project. But that might happen next year, that they're going to be burning that. And so hoping that the combination of those, those two treatments might help kind of improve that, that habitat back there. Because that's really a shrub winter range and it really needs to burn. It really hasn't, it hasn't burned in a, in a long time. So that's going on. Otherwise, all the orange are roads that, that we treated, that FWP treated. The red is DNRC and then the pink is where reseeding occurred on top of where it was sprayed. So it was sprayed and reseeded, so that's, that's FWP as well. And then all the little black dots are places where we did biocontrol releases this last year. So a lot of those around, around Deer Creek and Lion Creek and then, and Camilla Gulch as well. And then some you'll see up in the Freeze Out Gulch ones I mentioned for the, the chrysalina bugs, the St. John's Wort bugs. And then there were some done on the leafy spurge up in Nemothe Creek. So, so we're going to be doing all of that again, again this year. So really, I mean, a ton has been accomplished so far. We've made really good progress. Some of these areas, some of these roads will be, we might have an opportunity to go back over. Certainly the open roads we're doing every other year, so we're hitting those really repeatedly. But when we find real problematic areas, you know, we can put more focus on that as well if we need to, to repeat treat some of those. And then, so this year, Nick's already been out spraying. We have this, we kind of broke this project up into phases, even though you, you know, from the last map you can see we kind of did work all over. But we do want to each year make sure that we do certain things within each phase of this area. So we really hit phase one and made sure that we had all the closed roads that we could in there. And that's why the majority of those biocontrol releases were down there. So phase two, Nick has already sprayed most of the closed roads in phase two. Phase two includes the state park leafy spurge as well. But again, they're just doing that every year. And now he's, he's been in Nemothe Creek this last week spraying spurge. And he's got a few more days of spraying spurge next week up there as well. So that's, that's kind of his focus at the moment, is trying to, to hit that. And then for those areas again that he can't get to, we'll be going out with, with bugs. And that private landowner out there, Doug Austin at the fold, has been really helpful working with Bert and Mike to line them out on where, because he hikes up there all the time, you know? And so he's been really helpful with showing them, you know, where they can get to and, you know, where the, some of the worst infestations are. So it's made our work a lot more efficient as well. So yeah, and so the rest of this, you'll just see kind of some of the basic stats about the accomplishments are kind of listed in here for 2020. It's through September 30th. This was on a federal fiscal year, so we came to this. So there, there's been some more treatments since then already, you know, we've done above and beyond it. But it gives you an idea of what we've been able to accomplish in the first year of the project. So we're pretty excited about it. I mean, I think we're already seeing, like I said, some places where we're, we're seeing a difference and, and really hope by the end, like in the state park, that we've really got that leafy spurge under control. So that's, that's what we've got. Any questions about that?
So you showed up all the comps, which was why it says one thing on the end, you have listed, it says Mineral County, no treatments due to COVID-19. But you did do treatments.
Well, the Mineral County stuff's all private land and Dave can speak to that.
Oh, oh, you mean the Mineral County private land?
Yeah, the private land.
That's, that was, that was a challenge. Last year in part due to COVID. It's, the, the project when we initially kind of talked about it, it, and when we started putting together the list of landowners, we were at about 150 landowners. When the project got finally approved, the boundaries got expanded quite a bit. So we have 219 separate landowners, individual landowners within the project area. So all of them were contacted with, with letters, initial letters, talking about the grant program, talking about what was available, and that there would be an application process coming forth. But it, it grew to much larger than, than the weed district under the handle, especially considering that you have one half-time employee and that's it. You know, the work that I'm doing for the weed district is, is through extension with already a full plate. So without some additional support or funding in there, which right now we're having difficulties finding anybody to even work for those positions, it's been a bit of a challenge. So we have three landowners that, that have applications ready that I think are probably going to be the only ones that we'll, we'll go with this year, once they're approved. So there'll be some, they'll be, we'll be working with them to establish some work. And whether they hire a contractor, whether they do it themselves. You know, they're refunded a certain rate, a certain percentage. So, you know, those are all written, written into the grant. We have that grant money budgeted, the budget for that. We definitely need to make sure that the match that the county has to supply remains in those, in those budgets. So that will be, you know, one of the things we'll bring up in the preliminary budget hearings in July 9th, whatever it is. But just to remind you of that, that that's, that's an obligation that we, you know, committed to two years ago. And you agreed to when you, when you signed the agreement then. So just to, just to keep that on the, on the back burner that, you know, you're into this for five years. Be a little, and the nice thing about the grant funds, that typically, you know, they're not, they're not something that, that, you know, you have much say. It's not like you can take those grant funds and throw them into somewhere else. So, you know, they're kind of, that's why we keep them in that separate 2840 fund and that's, that's pretty much there. But the max that you've committed for still needs to be put in yearly as well. So just to kind of keep that on, 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 on the back burner and be reminded of that, so. And that we will be coming in for a budget increase this year to get a weed coordinator hired for next year because Mike retires. So that's an 18-year employee that's going. But yeah, we'll see what we can do with some of these landowners. We're looking at, at some fall treatments with them because one of them is the fold and they've got a nice big patch of vent nada out in the middle of their fields. The spurge along the road, the county, the, the county maintains and took care of that and actually extended that a little bit. I mean, Lori knows this, but, you know, leafy spurge in the Tarkio area was first identified in 1945. And 1948 is when the weed district was formed in response to that. And there've been a lot of things done on that ground. The early records, some of the products they used are a little scary, but there's been a lot of, a lot of work that's been done on that. The challenge that we have is that it's, it's, it's a difficult expense for people. Even though it's a statutory requirement, it's a difficult expense for people to make because they're not getting money off that ground. We disagree. So it's, it's a challenge. So you can hold a big stick of, of saying, well, if you don't, you know, patrol it, we're going to, we're going to do it. We're going to bill you and find you and all that kind of stuff. Well, then we're out the money for having to do that. They appeal their taxes, you know, and there's, there's a lot that comes down to it. So it's, it's, it's been a weed board's policy for many years to try and work cooperatively, get people to, to realize the value and the worth of it and come in and do that. But it, when it comes right down to it, when it comes out of the pocketbook, it's a, it's a tough ask on a lot of, a lot of landowners. So there's a few challenging landowners up at Fish Creek we're not even going to really talk to. Need another gun push in my face. It's just the way it goes, but they're sovereign anyway apparently, so it's okay. But, you know, by and large, you know, the ones that have expressed an interest in it, I think are ones that are gonna, gonna follow through with it. And then the monitoring component is a little bit of a, of a challenge for some of them to, because that's five years after, correct? Again, five years?
Three if they just do a herbicide.
Oh, it's just three, okay. But three years after the sun, or the, you know, the project end in, in 2024, so.
Well, just after they do their treat, wherever they put their transect. So they'll do a pre and then they'll, you know, that'll be here before they do their treatment. And then they just have to go back three years just from that treatment. So not necessarily the end of the project.
And most of them I, I foresee are, are going to be treating up until that last, last date potentially. So depending, depending on where we're looking, you know, which weeds they're going after. But if it's something like spurge, then they'll be treating it, you know, yearly. If it's napweed or something, they can get out of there. And depending upon how the plateau treatments with vetnotta turn out, they might get a couple of years out of it. But we'll see. It's going to be, it's going to be interesting working with, you know, Liz has to work with one entity, FWP, and DNRC works with DNRC and Forest Service works with their entity, you know, with, with one Forest Service. And then we're kind of struggling working with, hopefully, if we can start with three or four, that'd be, that'd be great. All 219 turn in applications in the cluster. But don't foresee that happening. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's, it's definitely been a, been a challenge on our full plates already just to, to kind of run with that. So like I said, we will be making another request for more budget money, just to recover some of this.
Well, and the possibility too is that, you know, in your budget, in the whip budget for Mineral County, there's con, there's money for contracted services. So if it gets, if there's a need there, you know, Mineral County can contract with a commercial applicator. Like we were, talked to Dave last week about maybe trying to work with Nick Holden when he's in those areas and close to private landowners. Can, can that work as well as trying to get some treatments out on, on private landowners where he's doing work for FWP, so.
Yeah, and for a lot of them, I mean, that's going to be, that's going to be much more, much easier and more convenient. Because, you know, one of them will be old for the side. So if Nick's already up in there doing stuff on, on FWP, right? He's, he's right there at that same, those same sites. Maybe different, slightly different treatment. I don't know if he's doing any vetnotta work in the Nemothe, South Port, Nemothe Creek.
Not at the moment.
Okay.
Yeah, it's mainly just on the spurge.
Yeah, so, so far the only vetnotta we found is down in the field of the folds. So, but we also haven't looked. And we do know there is some up on the fold stuff further up the main stem. So, you know, those are the treatments that, if Nick has come back and do them or, or we may, you know, go in and do them as demonstration research projects separate with some county monies. So.
That was honestly, from the very beginning of the whip program, that was one of the real underlying drivers to this is managing weeds is really, really challenging.
Oh, yeah.
But managing them at this scale brings in the ability that, so your neighbor pours all their investment and time into managing weeds, but the other neighbor doesn't. Well, now we can actually operate at a scale that we're, every, all the neighbors are affecting each other. But also finding these efficiencies that economy scale across that whole landscape. And if you've got one contractor able to work and blur the lines between the ownership, well, then the money goes a lot further or the amount of work that goes into the contracting gets easier. And so that's hopefully what we'll see as time goes on, is grabbing those efficiencies.
Yeah.
Well, in the, the last few minutes we have, since we have so many of you in the room, is anything else new, new with the state park or the rafting or the gorge or the plans? How, how are things going with COVID now? Everybody's coming out and using everything a lot more often?
Yeah, we saw, I think generally what we saw for recreation in particular last year was, was a very significant increase. I'm sure you guys saw that as well. We, and Lori probably at our CAC meeting the other night probably saw some of these presentations. But for our fishing access sites and our state parks and wildlife management areas and licensing, license purchases and, and all the national trends and Western United States trends all indicate exponential growth in recreation. But over a five and 10-year period, we're seeing that growth. Last year, we had a significant peak. We're not actually seeing for a lot of different reasons, some of that fell off again in some sectors for, again, lots of different reasons. But generally what we're seeing is although it, it peaked and it's dropped a little, it's higher than it ever was. So we don't expect it to drop. We expect that to be a new normal and trying to figure out how do we make sure that we have the resources to manage that. But, and it's not just us, it's the Forest Service, it's public land, it's private land, it's, it's commercial businesses, building homes. I mean, every sector that we can imagine was impacted by this change. And so it, it'll be interesting to see what this looks like in a couple more years. But for the, for Fish Creek, the watershed, last summer, our staff got together. What we're really seeing a lot of up there as campgrounds and other recreational sites fill, people can't find campsites. And a place like Fish Creek has a lot of dispersed camping where you don't need to make reservations. And it's relatively unrestricted on the kind of camping opportunity that's up there. So we really saw a significant increase last summer in the number of folks just going and finding a place to camp, which is good. I, it, we're not trying to steer it away from some recreational opportunity up there. But all our fishing access site staff and state park and wildlife management area and our game wardens all came together last summer and said, we're going to have to get our arms around this. Because if this, if this is just the beginning of what this looks like, what we don't want to do is have that be the landing spot for everybody that couldn't find a spot anywhere else. And we also don't want to turn it into a destination location that's unrestricted where you can just go and camp and it's free and you just have fun and you, no one there bother you. And that turns into something much bigger really quickly. And so that was our interest last summer. So the work that we're doing right now is to probably, we're just at the beginning stages of trying to do a planning effort that crosses all of it. So it won't be just the state park or just fisheries or just the fishing access sites or the wildlife management area or the DNRC, because they've got, there are, there are sections of land where there's a lot of dispersed camping. But instead, we're just at the beginning of stages of trying to, to approach that as a watershed approach. So that, because the users don't know if they're on the state park. If you come over from Washington or Idaho to go camp and drop your RV and your OHVs and go have some fun for a weekend, you don't know where you are.
No.
And so the expectation for them is let's make it easy. Let that, you know, so it's to do the right stuff and go where you can camp and, and conform to the, to what the watershed can withhold, then great, let's just make it easy.
So is there any planning on doing anything with the state park as far as campsites?
Yeah, but you know, the reality, when, when that was acquired, there was an interest in developing a destination campsite location and the rest. But since day one, they haven't had the resources to develop the plan and implementate, implement the actual development of any kind of a structure. And even today, 10 years later, the, the resources to even get a planning document off this, off the table on what kind of recreation could be allowed there is this far from actually building it and having the staff and FTE and employees to manage a, a site. So I think the reality for state parks is if, if, if that isn't going to happen anytime soon, then let's not get caught with us always in an interim where we're not quite sure what that's going to look like. Let's move more quickly to say, well, what activity is going on out there? What can we allow without investing a lot of development money right now? What, what, what opportunities can we provide and how can we manage that? It's just, I think it's just more of a practical approach right now. Like, let's get arms around it and be really clear so the public knows what they can do.
Well, I talked to Nate the other day and asked him where the, the plan was for redoing the Fish Creek Road there. And he said that he'd met with Liz and thought that they had a pretty good plan in place to use that gravel pit to, to use that. And that's really encouraging because he said that it would be a 40% increase in cost if they won't be able to.
Yeah, we're really hoping to be able to, to help on that. And you, and we've long had conversations around where we bump into problems is the, the acquisition money for that was through that Pittman Robertson funding, the same funding for the whip grant. So what we've been, what we're really working hard to do right now is just to identify all the benefits of us using our, using our, that gravel for the benefit of the wildlife management area and the roads that cross the WMA. I think, I think there's room there.
I hope so.
And so, and our interest then is also then, you know, what, and we're, we have to coordinate with DEQ as well because that'll be a gravel pit that needs to be permitted. And it's not, the previous pit that was there before wasn't ever permitted. And so through this process, we're going to have multiple permitting things we've got to navigate. But Nick's been super helpful and, and the site visit, I think you guys described, defined at least what the area could look like. There's a rehab requirement for that.
Right.
And so what, what we're looking at right now is how do we extract the gravel we need for the work that can be done and then rehab that site? And I, and we're really hoping to be able to do it.
Yeah, because like I said, it is something that needs to be done and, you know, I mean, I guess the, the cost, just the savings of costs to be able to use that would be a real benefit.
Yeah, I'm glad you talked to him about that. And, and so I, what's your next steps, Liz, there on, after me and Nick?
So Nate was going to drop a couple of plans of kind of the rehab thing. And then we're going to review those and have everyone have a chance to look at that. And then we need to figure out the permitting.
Yeah, because they've got the money from the Great American Outdoor app to do that road. And, you know, replace culverts and, I mean, really help the, the watershed, you know, with that road, so.
Yeah, so we have an eye, they said they can't start work this summer anyway. And so we have an eye to next summer. And so to make sure that we keep this moving forward so that we can go through our processes, hopefully in time to stay on their schedule.
Good.
So we expect, I mean, just to, all eyes open. Our, our process will require us not only to be coordinated with the DEQ for that permitting process and they probably have a public process for that permit. And then we, for ours, we'll have to do an environmental assessment likely as well. So there'll be a public process. So for all the public that looks at Fish Creek as their place, we have to be able to face that whole public very interested in Fish Creek and say, this is why we think this is a good idea. This is what, what we expect to get out of this project and what the reclamation piece would look like, restoration piece would look like. So there, there, that process hopefully would happen once we know what the DEQ permitting looks like.
Because the majority of the, the project is within the WMA, so.
Yeah, that, I think that was the, we, we, we looked at it very closely, trying to tie it to that as much as we could, primarily to get it so that we don't bump into any problems with somebody saying, well, wait a minute, how, how are you using this gravel for the benefit of the wildlife management area? So that, that's exactly what we pointed at is what, the portions of the road that cross the WMA are certainly eligible for us to, to assist in the development of that road as it, as, to, to allow the Fish Creek Wildlife Management Area to function the way it's supposed to.
To be accessed.
Yep.
Good.
Well, I don't want to cut everybody off a little late, but we should have put more time down so we could.
It's about time you consider that toll road on the county. You have a lot of Fish Creek. There's a new generator right there, you know?
Boy, that would be better than permit only. That would slow it down.
Since there's only a couple of ways back in there on the back roads and nobody really likes to take.
Yeah.
Nate's them, podcast.
It was nice to see you guys again. Yeah, to see you in person and see that everybody's doing well.
The road department with a selection for road department.
Yeah, we, uh, there was four of us, me, Lori, Terry and Jeff interviewed three candidates on Wednesday. We met and we had some pretty decent candidates. We made the job, the offer to Luke Boyce and he's going to come to work for us. So you guys just need to approve the hiring, I guess.
Yep, no, they.
He was, he's, they're, they were young guys, but they have some experience and they're wanting to go, so.
Yep.
We were excited to have some candidates, actually.
And then, and so, and then our new probationary period is 12 months for employees?
And you know, if you remember, we changed ours to 12 months years ago anyway because we, we're kind of a cycle where we all want to see what you can do. If you get hired in May and your probation period ends in September, October, I want to see you, plow snow. Yeah, so, so we've always been kind of a 12-month round. But yeah, yeah, it was no problem. It was good to have, like I said, have some candidates. And like I said, we extended the offer to Luke Boyce.
Okay.
And he has accepted. So I think we just need your guys' approval and hiring.
Yep.
I was always understanding that commissioners hired and fired. So that's what we, the way we've always done it.
Okay, you don't want me to fire you, do you?
You can, I don't know.
I make a motion that we approve Luke Boyce as the new road department hirer.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, based on the hiring selection board and the recommendation of the road department head. And Mr. Simons' motion, all in favor to hire Luke Boyce, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the opposed?
Well, I think we're happy. I think he'll do well and we'll, like I said, we'll be.
And he starts when?
Uh, 20, 21st. It'll be two weeks from Monday.
He's going to give two weeks' notice.
So we, and I've talked to him and Don's going to send out a letter and stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, he was, he was very excited and, and one thing that he said was, I'm young enough, I'm not set in my ways, I'm willing to learn, you know, which.
Yeah, he's good operator.
Yeah, so I, I, I thought that that was very impressive.
You're stealing from my log here, bro.
Oh, is that right? Luke Boyce works in the log, huh?
Yeah.
How many did you guys interview?
Three.
Three.
So, and we'll be back at it in probably another month, too. So, you know, once.
Okay.
Anyway.
All right.
That's all I got.
Well, very good. Thank you.
You can come right on.
Agenda, 11:15, it is posted, Micah Allard personnel matter, a vote and decision. And because it's a personnel matter, Mr. Allard can request that the meeting be closed. He's not here. And the second way it can be closed is if he requests it in writing. So I have here, it's not printed yet, but the email to HR is from Mr. Allard. I am requesting the discussion by the commissioners on the 4th of June be closed and you bring forth the information on my letter on my behalf. And then he would like to have our decision publicly, vote, vote our decision in public, but during the discussion of the issue, it be closed. That's in writing, so we will abide by his request and abide by ask that the people leave the meeting room until we discuss it and then we'll open it back up for our actual vote on our decision. Thank you. We had our closed meeting and read the documents from the sheriff's office and from Mr. Allard. And now we're reopening the meeting publicly to render what the thoughts are of the commissioners regarding the action item. The action item is regarding the employment and whether to stick with the recommendation of the department or to authorize reinstatement of employee.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to agree with the decision to terminate employment and to not reinstate the employee. and to not reinstate the employee.
Now, I'll second that.
A motion and a second to stay with the termination. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and you opposed? I don't know what to say. This is a hard thing and I kind of wish that didn't happen and I wish that it was different.
Okay.
Okay.
I would like to make public comments that the weather has been way too hot the last few days.
I'll second that.
11:15, and it is update on the CVA grant.
Yes, and this is the, like, the Victim of Crime Act grant that pays Patty's position. We just, and it's for two years, we just put in the application. This is the one we came and talked to about that Sanders County Coalition was helping us with. We don't pay them anything, they're just kind of administering it. I still supervise Patty. I just met with Sanders County Coalition Director and her financial person a couple weeks ago, they're coming back next week too. We got our initial notice of how much we're going to get funded and we're not getting our, they're anticipating we're not going to get our full funding, which stinks. I, we believe it's going to be enough to keep Patty. That's our, that's our priority. We want a person, you know, the person. The other stuff, it's great that we, when we can help with food vouchers and gas vouchers and things like that, these are people that need it. We're limited resources out here, we don't want public transportation, but we need a person, you know, desperately need the person. So I was concerned, and I had talked to Patty about this, I was concerned that maybe having Sanders County Coalition help us, did the Board of Crime Control maybe see that as, we had a discussion, because we meet weekly with the CBAs, that they may have seen us as, you know, wow, they're getting a little big for their britches. They're now, you know, teaming up with another county and, or, I don't know. I was concerned because this is the grant that Mary and I had written four years ago and we've always gotten fully funded. So I had brought up saying, gosh, I wonder, are they looking at it as, we're going to cut you because now you're lining up with somebody that's got more money? But thank goodness Patty reminded me that across the board, we were getting more than the average, they, they're cutting everybody. They're just, there just wasn't enough money. So I felt better because I thought, oh, I don't want to cut the ties to Sanders County because we're actually hoping to potentially get to a place where we could look at transitional housing with some of their service providers. Or rely on some of their expertise in that to help us out. And Patty reminded me that the average is like 60% they're funding and we got, we're going to get about, well, we're anticipating about 65, 66% of what we've asked for. We don't know for sure we're getting that. They've sent us the initial letter saying, this is what we have voted on to give you. That's going to cover Patty. But I just wanted to give, actually Gail said, did you let your commissioners know? I said, no, I didn't. Dawn, get me on the agenda. So, you know, we're hoping she'll still be here full time. I mean, that's, that's, we're just going to have to make it work because we just desperately need the advocates. So I just want to let you know, we're anticipating, this is going to be our first year, well, seven, yeah, so it was 2017 and it was two years, 2019 was two years. So this is, yep, this is our third time and we're getting cut. The first two times we got fully funded, so. And our numbers are, are significant. Even Gail, when she first reached out to us and we were just, and basically we're, you know, having her look at, the thing with Patty's position is she doesn't do just personal injury victimization. She does burglaries, robberies, you know, crashes when people don't have health insurance, so she's doing a lot of that. So we said, if you're not just looking at, if you, we're not just looking at PF, you know, partner family member assault, sexual assaults, but if you look at all of our felonies. Gail couldn't believe our numbers because again, we have more felonies than Sanders does. We prosecute more, we charge more felonies than Sanders does. And so we put all that in our grant and we cite our stats and that's why we always thought, that's why we're getting funded. They realize, unfortunately, we have so much crime because of our location, not based on our population. 5,000 people, you're thinking, it's not going to be that big. But we, yep, but we've got more. And just recently I was talking to the Federal Express guy and I said, I was just talking to the Federal Express guy and I said, you know, oftentimes you see with criminal, it's, when you're doing this a long time, you start feeling like, everybody's a criminal. But of course, that's not the case. We just keep, you know, we see that because that's what we do. And I said, but here, most of the times it's probably like 80, 20, 70, 30s, see, you know, kind of people that keep struggling and, but I said, we get a lot of different people, especially with, and also with the, the truck, the weigh station. So I said, a lot of ours, you know, we have a few people who we see frequently, but I just recently, I think I charged three or four felonies this week. I've got two more sitting on my desk and none of them, no, one, one felony DUI is from St. Regis, but everybody else is not from here. So it's our location. So we just have to continue to let them know we desperately need this funding.
There's no federal funding available for that, for the crime victim, do you?
The, actually, the money for part of, or I don't know if, it might be all of Patty's funding, it comes federally to the state. So it's the Victims of Crime Act, the federal money. And then it goes through the Board of Crime Control and then they disperse it. That's who we apply to, but yep, it's federal money. It's coming down.
Depending on the legislature giving us money.
Yeah, nope, no. And then, and then also we have that money from the victims, the $50 victim fee we get as part of surcharges. And I think, I asked Patty, it's only a few thousand, it's like five or six, seven thousand in there, so it's, it's not a ton, but we have a little bit in there. The tough thing is when I talked to Gail about where do you think we struggled on our grant application, the one area that we, everything we did well on except for sustainability, which when I, in talking to Gail and she agreed, and actually she was the one who mentioned it, and I said, that's what's going on. They want to see, if we stop funding you tomorrow, how are you going to keep this program? Well, that's very difficult for us. We don't have like, like even Bu, the women's shelter there, they have like a Betty's Closet, you know, the YWCA has Secret Seconds. They have, you know, they have transitional housing, they have something that could potentially fund them. They might have maybe a local tax on something, you know, they might say, okay, every time somebody gets a dog license, the commissioners have agreed to give 50 cents to the victim advocate, you know, I'm just giving examples. We don't have any of that. So when, when they ask us, how are you going to sustain this? They're right. We have no, there's no other place to pick this up other than you guys helping us. So that's where we got dinged, but it's, the other thing is, is we have nothing to tax. You know, we can't go after public transportation or, you know, so. So that's, that's where we took the biggest hit was how are you going to sustain this program if we didn't fund you? We didn't have this person until you funded us. It was nothing. We had a part-time and now we have one and three quarters. Oh, actually, we have two with, with, like, two full-time with Emily pitching, and we've got plenty for them to do and we need them to do even more than what they're doing now. And I think they feel pretty overwhelmed and I've got more that I want them to do. So, so just to let you know, we didn't get everything we asked for. This is, this was our third time applying for this money. The first time we didn't get everything we asked for, but it looks like it's across the board. Everybody got cut by about a third.
That was certainly a wonderful victory that Lance pulled off with that lady from Lake County.
Yes, he, he had, I had seen that and then he, I think he had faxed it to me or texted it to me or something and, and then he stopped in and was talking about it. It's just, yeah, just, I don't know if you're aware of that. And, and we actually had him, this is all public record, I mean, all public knowledge, we had that gentleman on a felony PF May here in our county, Mr. Lace, for allegedly assaulting a different partner. So Lance was asking for our records.
I just kind of showed you how bad it is.
Yeah, yep, yeah, yeah. So that was, that was just unbelievable and just the trauma there all around, so. And he, it's my understanding that he and his co-counsel were doing that pro bono.
Yeah.
Just, yes, yep, which is super impressive to just take your time because you think it's, you know, the right thing to do. And, yeah, and like I said, we had him as a defendant on another felony assault of a completely different partner. So, yeah. So that's, that's all I've got on that. Not great news, but we're going to, we're going to make it work for Patty. Patty's aware and she knows that our priority is personnel. We just, we need her body here and she's getting into the job and getting to understand it a little bit better and, yeah. So any questions about that? And then we'll let you know for sure, I, I'm hoping, I looked to Mary, I'm hoping that they won't then, you know, say, okay, we said we were going to give you 66%, we're only giving you 60. It's not set in stone now, but in confirming with Gail, it's almost always what they vote to give you. They very rarely. Oh, and that's the other thing I wanted to try to do. I had Patty get our budget from Calanne and some of the line items that the budget is on the state fiscal year, July to June. Some of our line items are not close to being expended on her grant. I want to see if they'll give me an extension. Not, because sometimes at the end of the fiscal year, we're buying a bunch of office supplies, which is great. I want to see if, what, what do I have to do? If it's a possibility, could we stretch that out for three more months? And I, I think that'll, we'll just be fine if they'll give me a little bit more time to spend that. And then we can just try to amend line items and put it into personnel.
I just got the budget stuff from a report from Calanne.
Oh, good. Yeah, see if they have the VOA stuff in there.
Yeah, I was seeing what I could. Find where you're at here, anyway.
Yeah, I should have thought to bring that down. I brought, I brought our narrative and just kind of explaining the, what they were looking for in the grant and where we kind of got dinged, but I didn't, I didn't think to bring that down. And Patty got it for me just before she went on vacation. So it's, it's pretty up to date. I think it's probably through May.
You don't know what.
I know personnel and stuff is right, probably pretty much right on, but there was a couple, it might have been like training or something, especially with COVID, because that's kind of helped all our budgets. There was something where we had a couple line items where we were doing, we had some money. And I thought, gosh, if they could just give me like another quarter to spend it, we, I think we can cover this shortfall and be fine. I just, I can't believe I forgot to bring it, sitting right on my desk.
Okay, well, we've got. Kind of, okay, Victims of Crime Act grant, is that it?
Yep.
Okay, and then the, okay, we've got one under Social and Economic Services, oh, I guess, and then there's an OVW CVA grant?
Yep, Office of Violence Against Women.
Oh, okay, alrighty, so.
And that's going to be more to Mary because she does the DV sexual assault or does more of that, yeah.
Let's see, so we still have.
Yeah, that'd be good. What's the grant? Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like you have, you haven't spent hardly anything in travel, so you still have like $2,500, $2,600 in travel, $300 in training.
Oh, I see.
In the, the CVA one and then the other one.
So if they can let me stretch, you know, if they can let me, give me an extra quarter. Sometimes they do, I don't know about this particular grant though, so I've got to reach out.
Anyway.
Yeah, so, wish I was the bearer of better news on that. Because again, like I said, we, we know we need it. And especially now that we've got, you know, we've got people who are interested in learning and doing a good job and I feel like we're getting such a good presence. You know, we've been doing this for a few years, people know we're here, we've got some new officers, they know a little bit about victim advocacy, so I would just hate to see it go, you hate to see that. We finally start doing some good work and then we lose our funding. So when I open my pizza parlor, 10% of it'll go to victim services. I was actually talking to Lance about that.
We need a good pizza parlor.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't, Four Aces is good, it's fine, but, well, that's what Lance said. He said St. Regis. I said, I'd like to do something in Superior, I don't want to compete with Four Aces, but you know, I, I feel like people would come off the, you know, pull off the road for a good pizza, so, but he said the same thing, St. Regis. Yeah, I could just walk to work.
Yeah. Put it in the clubhouse.
Yeah, yeah, because I was saying, even if, because I was thinking even just the, you know, where Whipped Up used to be. I mean, there's a kitchen already in there. I don't know what it looks like, because I already, I always just ordered for pickup, I've never eaten in there, but, yeah, and I said, and a drive-through window so people could just pick up, you know, order ahead, drive-through, yeah. But I don't know if anybody has any questions about that. Or anything you want to add, Mary, just because I may have missed something, she knows. This is all her fault. She's, she's the one who.
This is our hospital work.
Yes, she's, she's the one who made us write that grant. She forced me to, under the cloak of darkness.
How long do we expect us to, whether we break from Sanders or on our own, how long do you think this money will be available for this?
It's two years.
Oh, very good.
Yeah, it's two years, yeah, it's a two-year grant, which is nice. And then we apply again and hopefully, maybe there was just a shortfall, I don't, you know, and I can't remember if I remember hearing that if they diverted some of the VOA money federally to other places, I don't know if they potentially went to COVID funding, so I don't want to definitely say that and then put out that bad information. But there was definitely, everybody across the board got hit a little harder than what we got. We only got slightly above what the average was, but at least we didn't get less than. Because I initially thought, ugh, is it because we're now aligning with Sanders? Sanders is wonderful, they, they are, they've got a great program, they've got amazing stuff, but I started thinking, when I saw that we were getting cut from what we requested, I was afraid they were thinking, hey, now that you've got somebody else to partner with, why do you need money from us, you know? But Patty reminded me that, no, everybody got cut. Everybody got cut and the average was 60-something percent and we got 65, 66% of what we've requested. And again, when Mary and I first put the request in four years ago, we were hoping to get a half-time victim advocate, we asked for a full-time, we just asked for the moon. We put in all sorts of stuff that we knew would make for a good victim advocate and we got it all. And we were hoping for half. So we're still in a better position than we would have been four years ago if we got what we thought we were going to get. We knew then that the Board of Crime Control knows we need services out here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, something about the location of our county or the demographics or something, but you know, there's plenty of need here.
Yes, and even, even the survivors or victims who still live in the community, I mean, I've got a pending case right now with the, the crime is alleged to have occurred here. The victims live in a different state, but it's 20 counts. I mean, we've got 20 counts of a, of a sexual assault against an individual here in, you know, little old Mineral County. So it's, it's just tough stuff. And we, we went to trial two months ago in a sexual intercourse without consent and that's local people. So we've got some, you know, it's, I don't want to say it's just the out-of-state people traveling through, we've got, and it's everywhere. It's not, you know, we're not saying that we're worse off than anybody else, but we've got tough stuff going on, so, yeah. And, and I would, I would almost be comfortable in saying that I, I think getting to trial from a prosecutor's point of view is helped so much because of the victim advocates, because that survivor has somebody who's on their side, who goes up and shows in the courtroom, who, when they meet with me and get scared, they're the ones texting, calling them, hey, do you need counseling? That's something that I feel like I need to make more clear to funding sources too of, I would argue, and I'd like to almost see the statistics, even locally, even just anecdotally, that I was able to take that case to trial because I had a victim advocate, because this young lady felt so supported.
She was willing to testify.
Yeah, and she, she sat in that courtroom with a bunch of strangers and the alleged offender sitting 20 feet from her and she testified. So, and I've got another trial coming up in July and it's a minor. So, you know, I'm hoping that the court will agree to let her testify remotely.
Right, yeah.
But, you know, I, I think I have a better chance because of the victim advocates. And that's something that I. And that's something that I, I need to convey. I think we have a better opportunity to actually hold people accountable, because they feel like they have support, 'cause I just can't, I'm not, I don't, I don't have enough time to spend with them, so. Yeah, so that's, that's my, that's my two cents. And how we doing? Oh, we're still early, so I was gonna say we can...
Ten minutes.
Yeah, which, which is the next one? I can't remember which is, what's the next thing? 'Cause I've got my two...
Do you have an agenda?
Well, I was looking at it today, 'cause I was trying to remember, 'cause I wanted to...
Uh, your next one is Reminder of Agenda versus Non-Agenda Items?
Oh, yes, 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 okay.
And clarifications on Commissioners' Roles and Responsibilities.
Yes, okay, so I wanna know which one to talk about next.
So are we done with this one? Do you want us to keep your...
Yeah, I think we're...
Okay, thanks for the CVA update. We've got one in ten more minutes. All right, excuse me, 1:45, and we've got Ellen, a discussion with Ellen.
Yeah, so we're talking about Agenda Items, right? Was that the next issue?
Agenda versus Non-Agenda Items.
Yes, and again, I know, I just wanted to bring it up, I happen to be watching the Commissioners' Meeting from May 21st, and I was watching about the parking lot, and I just, I was so surprised to see how expensive, I guess I just don't realize how much asphalt is, how expensive that was, I was watching that, and I know it got diverted, then there was talk about the application process and things like that. Again, and I know sometimes you guys are put in a tough position where a department head might come in, and you guys are all here, but if the three of you are here, even if you're not voting on something, if it's not on the agenda, try to stop the department head, or if it's not during public comment, from somebody in the, in the public. And people can come in during public comment and talk, bring up anything. You don't have to respond, don't respond, you don't have to say you're gonna make a decision, anything like that. If a department head comes in, or wants you to stay after, or tries to talk to you about something, and two, even if two or the three of you here, if it's not on the agenda, try to stop them, 'cause it's, it's putting you in a, in a tough position. Of just saying, ugh, you know, let's not talk about this, can we get this on the agenda? Just to, you know, protect you guys, protect the county, just because it's, if we have counties saying, I, I wasn't noticed on this, or I would've wanted to be involved in this, or I heard you talk about this, even if you're not making a decision, just to, and, and you can even say, Ellen, oh, you know how Ellen is. That's a-okay, and just like I've said before, don't shoot the messenger, but that's okay, I'm, I'm the one, you know, I'm the one that's telling you, don't, just say, I, I gotta stop you, can we get this on the agenda? And I know sometimes things feel like they have to be done quickly, that was the other good thing when we had, I call him the wrong name, Dave Clark? No.
Dan.
Dan Clark.
Dan Clark.
See, I keep saying Dave Clark, 'cause it's, wasn't that a band? The Dave Clark Five?
Yeah.
Dan Clark, that totally dates me, so please, I was more in, yeah.
He's late, and so if you don't know...
Okay, good, thank goodness, because now everybody knows I'm old, but...
Or did you mean Dick Clark?
Dick, oh, that's even older, oh my God. But, like when Dan Clark said, it's so important that we try to remind people, we're, we're not a private business, so, and he used that great example during the training of, if we were a private contractor and we wanted to buy a loader, we just say, we have the money, or we're taking out a loan, buy the loader. It might take us a year for the county to buy a new police car, to buy that front loader, because, do we have the money? We have to put it out for bids, we have to let the public know, they get to input. So sometimes things do feel like they have to be done quickly, and sometimes they might have to be done quickly. But, we're not a private entity, so if somebody says, no, we gotta talk about this today, and I know we only meet once a week, I gotta stop you, Ellen's gonna annoy us again, she's gonna put this on the agenda and remind us, we can't talk about this, can we put this on next week's agenda? And I, I'm totally okay with that, 'cause I'm the, I'm the pain in the, pain in the neck that's reminding you, just, just be careful, you know?
I'm trying to remember back, what the parking lot thing was.
Uh, Norm was here talking about paving the parking lot, you guys only had one bid, and then it started talking about there was applicants for the, uh, the, hiring the road crew. And so then it got into, there seemed to be some miscommunication about how somebody was supposed to apply, whether or not Dawn was accepting an application, so it got into this whole thing, and I thought, uh-oh. And also, and I did actually email Jason, 'cause I wanted him aware that I was gonna be bringing this up, that I'm not talking about that issue, but I'm using it as the example. I didn't want him to think we're talking about something without him here. I've just, I, I know while you were here, while he was here, let's talk about it, that probably should've been put on the agenda, or, you know, something that's talked about between department heads, if you feel like you can't get resolution, then we bring it to the Commissioners, but we need it on the agenda. Yeah, 'cause if we're, if we're, if we're treating a part, a department differently on how we're accepting applications, and we're not in agreement about that, then yes, let's bring it to the Commissioners. But when it kind of went off on that, when I was watching the meeting, I thought, ooh, I'm just gonna ask, I went to Dawn and said, can we put on the agenda just a gentle reminder that I'm asking you guys, or I'm advising you to just say, oh, yeah, can we stop that? I'm sorry, Ellen's gonna be on our tail again, we have to stop you, there's three of us here. You know, if you happen to catch me one-on-one, that's a, that's a different process, and then we can bring it up on the agenda, but if two or three, two out of three, or all three of us are here, even though you're not voting, I might be reading this way too tightly, but just, it's more for protection for you guys in the county. Just in case.
I gotta read you, that one spiraled out of control real fast. I kinda chagrined a little bit with that.
Well, and you never, and you, you don't know, and I, and I've talked about, there's been times I've been down here, even pre-COVID, when I used to come down a little bit more, I would jump in on conversations and then forget that, oh, shoot, yeah, we, it's not on the agenda, I've done it, I've been there, I know it, so it's just a gentle reminder of, and it's a-okay, and if somebody says, well, I need to talk about it now, we gotta run it by Ellen. And I know you guys are looking for me early today, I did text the sheriff last, he and I were on the phone last night, and then we hung up, and I texted him saying, oh, I gotta remind you, I've got court in the morning, and he sent me a thumbs up, so I apologize, I had, I had texted him to let him know I've got court, and so I know you guys are looking for me this morning. So, if something like this comes up, and they say, well, I need to talk about it right now, or we can't wait till next Friday, we're gonna call Ellen, but we're gonna put, we'll try to put on the agenda next Friday, or if they come in on Monday, or, or something, or if they want it on the agenda Thursday for the next day. And Dawn, if for some reason, it's, you know, they're saying, no, it has to be on tomorrow, we haven't given adequate notice, have them call me, or say, let me call Ellen, and if I'm not available, I'll try to get back to you as soon as I can, but we have to give adequate notice, you know, we, we have to be able to notice it to the... And again, we were just recently, there was a, a training, the Tillotson Training, and they're doing that remotely as well, and they again, talked a little bit about, and that's through the MMIA, a little bit about, we have to be pretty specific on our agenda, you know, like we, we know from before, it can't just be county attorney issues, it's gotta be hiring new, yes, yeah, and we've got, we're doing that, so just, you know...
Ellen, so I have a question for you. I know sometimes I feel in the hot seat when I have to remind someone who's talking, oh, I'm sorry, it, we can't talk about that?
Yeah.
Is it appropriate for me, either as the Commissioners' Assistant, or as HR, to do that, or should I just stay out of it?
Boy, that's a tough one. If it's, if it's, if somebody's bringing up something that maybe is like a personnel issue? Okay, I would say yes. As the HR person, I'd say, you could say, you know what, I'm not comfortable, I, I don't think we should be talking about this. And if they continue, I, I think I look to, you know, Chairperson Zalawi, how do you feel about this? I don't think we should be talking about this. Okay, you know, we're gonna stop the talk on this, let's check with Ellen, and it may end up being okay. I would err on the side of caution and say, almost always, it's not gonna be okay. And like I said, I've been down here, and I've participated in conversations, and then realized, shoot, we were talking about the bridge that was on the agenda, and then I started talking about the flood plain or something that's not on the agenda, that there might be a person who's interested in that. So as the HR person, in terms of like a general topic, I would then defer to the Commissioners, hey, I, I'm not sure if this is, this was adequately noticed, you know, how do you guys feel?
Okay, so earlier today, we had the Fish and Game in here, on talking about their whip program. And so they did their little presentation, well, then we're also coming down the road, having a future road project on Fish Creek in the same area, which the, the Fish and Game has a WMA on there, and their, the road goes through the WMA, and we're looking at getting the gravel from maybe the Fish and Game as part of helping out with this project, so, do I then not bring that up? Because it really wasn't on the agenda, but it's only time that they come down here, and so, you know, we might ask, well, what's the wolf, you know, what's the wolf population? How's it doing, or how's the, how did the elk count come up, or...
I know.
You know, I mean, it's...
And we've talked about that before, we can't even say hello.
We can't have them come down for every little...
Right.
Thing that...
But on something like that...
Well, the gals came from Helena, so we had all the players from Fish and Game here, we had the head of the weed product program from Helena, then we had the lead of Fish Wildlife State Parks, Randy Arnold, then we had the wildlife biologist, Liz Bragman.
Oh, God, I wish I could've been here, that's...
So we had all these big...
Players.
Players that had, have all kinds of, you know, decision-making authority in our county on this area, Fish Creek State Park, which the only thing that's on the agenda is the Wildlife Habitat Improvement Project, but park, within that area, too, is a, is a gravel for a road, also State Park, are they gonna build any toilets, or are they gonna build any campgrounds yet, are they gonna, I mean, there's a whole bunch of things, and each one of those guys knows what's going on with that particular program within Fish and Game, you know, the Alberton Gorge, the floating, the weeds...
Yeah.
The roads.
Now, when you're getting into like the Alberton Gorge stuff, I'd say, no. You know, I mean, if it was related to that, you might be okay, I, I, I almost, and again, it feels like it's so...
Well, the weeds were right on the other side, the Alberton Gorge is a river, and so, the side where people drive is not being sprayed, but the other side of the river is being sprayed, it's in the state.
But it wasn't on the agenda?
As a spray, it was.
Oh, okay.
As the weed part of it was, but then it's just like, you know...
I, I think you'd be okay to say, you know what, I, I wonder about, we're gonna have an issue with gravel, or if you guys are gonna grade that road or something, we're gonna, can we get that back on the agenda next week? We know you're all here, would you be available by phone? Or who's gonna be the players to get that on, and then I wouldn't discuss it. I, I, again, I know it's not decisions, and so it feels like, only if we're making decisions, but we just wanna be so careful. And I know there's times, you guys have tried to be flexible with the community about having night meetings, and, and maybe you have one person who's Zooming, but it's not actually whether or not somebody comes or Zooming, it's, they, they should have access, or they should be aware, you know? And I know it's frustrating, but, or...
Then they should be here, is my opinion.
Yeah, if they're interested, yeah, if they're interested, then be here.
We have how many Commissioner meetings a year here in this room, and two people show up?
Yep, and we know that they're every Friday.
And then you get a room full of people like we had at Fish and Game, and you can't talk about this? I don't agree with that at all.
Yeah.
I don't, I'll take my chances.
Yeah, well, and that's, I, I mean, I'm just advising you that...
I'm not, I'm not putting you down for nothing, but...
No, and, no, and I appreciate that you, that you say that, I'm just advising you that, that if it's not on the agenda, we wanna be very careful about talking about it. Or if we, you know, again, and then it's tough, because we can't be vague.
But Fish Wildlife and Parks, think about Fish Wildlife and Parks, so do we talk about parks, do we talk about Fish Wildlife, what, you know?
No fish or wildlife.
Yeah, or weeds, you know?
Right, right.
It's all part of that.
Right, and then, how you try to get...
Fall within the scope of that conversation.
Right, but as we try to get around that, is by just putting Fish Wildlife and Parks issue, we've been told that's not good enough. It, it can't just be, you know, or actually, one of the examples that I read was an Agenda Item that said, volunteer fire truck. That was not good enough, because they said, well, what does that mean? Are they buying a new one? Are they repairing it? Is there something with the light? Is it because the driver lost his license to a DUI? It has to be. So it doesn't have to be so, you know, minute, but if you're not, you know, we, we do have to explain it so, because a person might say, and they might not have, we know a lot of people are Monday morning quarterbacks, we all are. I mean, when my Eagles lose on Monday, I'm telling them what they should've done. So on this Friday evening, a person didn't come to the committee, to the council meeting, and then they're gonna complain about what happened, and they have the right to do that, of course they can. But, they might say, it's because I didn't know you were talking about, we now no longer have a driver for the fire truck because he got a DUI. This is just an example, this is not based on real life at all. I thought it was, you were gonna be talking about whether or not we're buying a new truck. If I knew it was about John Smith getting a DUI, I would've been here. So that's why it has to be more specific. We had all these players, they're like, oh my gosh, we're so sorry, we've got a couple other issues we wanna bring up, when will you be able to come back, or can we get you on the phone next time, or who's the one we're gonna talk to about gravel? We're not gonna need all four of you again, but who's gonna be the one that we have to talk about gravel, 'cause we've gotta get that on the agenda? So you can, I think you can bring up the topic, but if you're gonna talk about it at all, I think it needs to be noticed. Again, even if people, even if not one person comes to this...
Well, and I, and I agree with you on like the volunteer part, I'm, we used to have a secretary here that was so vague, I, I didn't even know what was going on on the Commissioner, what are we talking about?
Yeah.
Volunteer fire, what, are we gonna put a new tire on it, or like say...
And it makes sense to me to keep it vague, because though, that you can have a broad discussion, but it's not enough notice.
But then conversely, Ellen, we've had federal lawmakers, you know, whether it be Tester, whoever, come and put on the agenda, and it's kinda like, come visit and talk about whatever you want to.
Right.
Somebody might come, oh, he's gonna be there, so I'm gonna talk about social security. Oh, he's gonna be here, so I'm gonna talk about the highways. We don't know, we can't, I mean, that's him coming to...
And that's almost kinda coming back to Commissioners, I almost said Zalawi, Simon. And so that's, that's why, on something like that, I would almost notice that, is like when you guys go out and there's two of you at a meeting, and you notice it to the community, two of us are gonna be at that meeting, so like if Tester, or, you know, whomever, Reberg, that, is that dating me, too?
Yeah.
You know, yes, if Governor, yes, Governor Gianforte comes, I would notice that, maybe not necessarily as a Commission meeting, I mean, even if it's as a separate, almost like you two going to Idaho Forest Service, we have to notice to the community that two of us are gonna be there, and they can talk about anything. The two of you happen to be there, there's not gonna be any talking about issues, you're not gonna be voting on stuff, even though there's a quorum there, you, all three of you might be here to meet the governor, but we're not gonna, it's, we're not viewing this as a Commission meeting.
Well, actually, no, he'll, he'll, they'll wanna come to a Commission meeting and talk to us as a quorum, and update us on what they're doing for the counties, and what they're doing for the state, and then the public also can come, because then they're gonna have their own little...
Okay, oh, so they're coming here.
But we have no idea what, what the topics may be, because it's kinda like a...
Right.
And it's like when the state highway comes in to give us an update on the projects that are...
There's a myriad of projects.
That are gonna be in the, in the county.
Different bridges, different roads.
And then we've brought up, well, hey, we have a problem with the trucks tipping over on the on-ramp, because they have to come down from the town pump, or, you know, guardrails needed out on Mullin Road, you know?
That wasn't on their list.
Yeah, you know, so...
That, we're, we're probably gonna run into that, that's probably gonna happen.
It's basically the same area of their expertise.
Yes.
We're just kinda like splitting hairs, on top of the guardrail, on top of the bridge.
Yes, and, and that, that may be okay, I, I hate, I mean, some of it may be common Yes. And, and that, that may be okay. I, I hate, I mean, some of it may be common sense. And like you said, with Tester or Governor Gianforte or whomever coming and you put on the agenda Senator Tester coming to talk about concerns with, for mineral county citizens and the state of Montana. Like you said, that could be everything. Gun rights to so and so.
Could we put a roundtable, table discussion?
That could be something too. And also because it is, you guys are all here. You're not voting. And it's just, but hopefully with that, it's, I, I would hope the general public would also be unnoticed that it could be anything. Because this is the governor of the state. He could be talking about anything. It is the center. If it's a department, like Mary comes from the Treasury Department and you know it's going to be about, we're switching banks. So instead of just saying Wells Fargo, it's going to say, switching from Wells Fargo because they're closing to, you know, Trail West. So it's not just Wells Fargo. Well, what about Wells Fargo? Do we have a problem? Did we bounce a check? No, we actually are switching because, or we're going to talk about switching because Wells Fargo is leaving the county or something. So I think some of it could be potentially more vague, but in terms of just, in, in, I would just suggest that a person in the community reading that, if they see fire truck, are they going to know we're voting on buying a new $500,000 fire truck? So if it's Senator Tester coming for a visit, if he happens to say, no, I'm talking specifically because I'm awarding you guys money, great. You put that and then, and other topics of interest or something like that. But if, if you know, you know, if I'm coming in and it's just county attorney issues, that's not going to cut it. I'm coming in to say, you know, we need more help. Or I didn't budget enough for office supplies and we're printing up a ton of stuff or something. Just to give, you know, is, is a person reading this going to know what we're going to talk about? And if you start drifting away from that, gosh, that Ellen, she's not down here, but she's going to end up calling us. She's, she's a pain. Yeah. And it's just really, again, to just, we are, we serve at the, you know, we're here because of the, our constituents, whether we agree, disagree, whatever, whether they come to one single meeting or not. Are they going to be on, and there might be people who actually read the agenda and they don't care to come, but they want to know what the heck is going on. So that, that, that was, I, I just happened to be watching it and I was saying, ooh, you know, I just, again, just a gentleman. Or if you feel like you're being put in a position by a department head or anybody else, and they want to talk to you about something that you know is not, and you think the community might be interested, stop them and say, you know what, I, I have to stop you. But I can't wait till next week. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It has to wait until next week. You know, and that's okay to put it on me. Yeah.
You're the boogeyman.
Yes, yes. And that, that's okay. You know, and again, you know, I, I could be, like you said, splitting hairs or watching each other. I think there's definitely some wiggle room. But if you feel like it's getting into an area where you think somebody might say, we, I would have come to that, or I would have liked to have been on notice on that, or that's not at all. The agenda item said a fire truck, and then you guys started talking about whether or not you're going to replace the emergency alarm system. That went too far afield. Just, just to, just to protect you guys. Yeah. And it's always nice to say, you know, the county attorney, attorneys ruin everything. I mean, that's, you know, every, every time you, when, when you, when you read the coffee cup that says contents may be hot, that's because of an attorney.
An attorney.
Yeah, yeah. We know coffee's hot. Every, a normal person-
I told you on the highway patrol whenever I went to a wreck, I could always tell whether it was a vehicle versus squirrel or a vehicle versus an attorney. Because there were always at least skid marks.
Skid marks for the squirrel. Okay. Yeah. And what's that other joke? Something about, what do you, what do you call a million attorneys at the bottom of the ocean? A good start?
A good start, yeah.
So we, we take it. We know. But, and, and when you see those little disclaimers, when they're saying, everybody knows coffee is hot. Why do you have to put that on there? Because somebody actually got injured because of it. So now we need to warn you. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, you know, contents may be hot. We know coffee's hot, but now we're able to say we've warned you. So we've given you notice and you chose not to come, and that's okay. You, you, you don't have to come to all the commission meetings, but we told you what was on the agenda. So we encourage participation, you know? So that, that's it on that one. And what, what time's our next one?
Oh, you have them both at the same time.
Oh, great. Oh, good. Okay. And what's the next one? I can't remember what I called that.
Clarifications on commissioners' roles and responsibilities.
Yes. Okay, yes. This was a, this was a concern. I was, and it kind of dovetails off of the, the application stuff with the road. I was talking to Dawn and she let me know that she was out one day and Lori, you had gone in and gotten some stuff out of her office. The thing I'm nervous about, commissioners have player role, absolutely, with human resources. You guys make the final call on whether or not somebody is terminated. We get that. I got nervous when Dawn, and I asked Dawn to put this on the agenda because I'm nervous about, Dawn has a couple of different roles. She's your assistant and she's also HR. Sometimes the commissioners and employees of the county feel like they're, you know, on opposite sides. You guys are saying, hey, you need to work this way, or we're not going to give this pay raise, or we're going to give this pay raise. And then the employees might say, well, we want this pay raise, or even if we had a union. With HR, what I'm nervous about is, from my understanding, I haven't seen anything, but Dawn had asked that it wait till the next day. And you went into the office and got the information.
Well, she wasn't, she wasn't here.
Right.
So we were communicating between texts. So by the time I came in and got, I hadn't got her text yet.
Okay.
So, um-
Yeah. My understanding was that she asked to wait till the next day and that, that the department head knew that she was going to be out on Tuesday or Wednesday. What I worry about is you going into an office that has personnel files. The HR person isn't there. If there's that air of suspicion from employees, I mean, I would, I, I know you didn't look at anybody's personnel file. I know that. How do other employees know that you're, you went into the HR person's office?
But aren't we HR?
Well, that's what I'm saying. You guys are HR.
We're the ultimate top.
Yes. And that's, that's what I said earlier. And, and you guys make the decision on whether or not somebody's terminated. However, my understanding was that it was conveyed of, this department head knows I was going to get him the stuff on Wednesday or Thursday. They, they can wait. It was not on fire. There was no need to do that.
Well, yes, there was.
No, no, he wanted to, because he had interviews the next day.
Wednesday.
To review the applications before the interview.
Okay, okay.
So Monday was the holiday.
Yeah. So think if it was you, that was, HR is a supportive role.
Yes.
HR supports the department director head, whether it be you or the road foreman.
Right. And, and the employees.
And that road foreman or you should have that application, all the applications in front of you well in advance of the interview day.
Right.
Because you need to do some proper vetting, some phone calls. You need to study it. You can't just come in there on short notice and make a, make a decision. So-
But, okay, so then let me backtrack. When was the closing date?
27th, I believe.
Okay.
So did he have all the applications then?
He never came, yeah.
He did have them?
He didn't. He knew three applications, because you called me eight. I mean, he knew we'd had two right away. So two weeks, we had two applications that he knew about. He was waiting for one more to come in.
Okay.
And so at four o'clock, he called me eight minutes to four. Did that last application come in? Yes, it did. And I told him, is, are we supposed to talk about this right now?
Roles and responsibilities.
Okay.
I think that the commissioners have the role. If he doesn't have them and he needs to make a decision. And we are HR, we are her boss. What's wrong with a trusted elected commissioner who is, is above HR, who's probably going to be on the interview panel and see it anyway?
Yeah.
To get it to the person who needs it.
Who asked for it.
Who asked for it. There's no reason to, to, to not give it to them.
Yeah. And see, my understanding was that, I don't, I, I mean, from my understanding was there was time to come and get it.
Could I clarify since, so yes, those applications were there forever and they are always available to department heads. Never are they withheld. And even on Thursday-
Except for when you weren't there.
Yeah, but woman-
So that's the point. It doesn't matter when they're available. It matters that he gets them.
Yes, but, but my understanding is that he knew that she was going to be gone on Tuesday.
Yes. I told him that on Thursday.
The commissioners knew she was going to be gone on Tuesday. We all, everybody who was a party to this knew she was going to be gone on Tuesday. And my understanding is that she had said, no, wait till tomorrow. And it was done in the-
Morning.
What worries me is I, I feel like there's an air of sometimes suspicion or, and especially, and we've talked about this before, where I feel like human resources should not be the same person as the assistant to the commissioners. Because I feel like, and what's been, employees have talked to me and I always direct them to HR, they're concerned that they feel like the HR person is an arm of you guys. Which they are, but that they can't trust the HR person when they've got an HR issue because they're afraid they come back and tell you stuff that they, some stuff they do, of course, have to report to you, some they don't. Because they're, they also are the HR person for the employee. So this to me was, oh, my gosh, again, we're having, to me, a problem between the HR and the assistant. Where I think we're putting Dawn in a tough spot, where I think it should be, I, I actually think we need a full-time HR. Because that's what, and we'll talk about that when we get to my budget time, because I have spent a tremendous amount of time on HR issues in the last year that I don't have. So, but just what concerned me is that, like I said, you guys are the ultimate arbiter of whether or not somebody's going to stay. You have access to this. But from my understanding, this information could have been gotten days before. This was a day that was told that she's not going to be available. And you, you went in to get it because you were asked to go get it, but it was my understanding that the person was told she's not going to be available that day. Opportunity to get it before. He could have gotten it in that, maybe that next morning. I don't know what time the interview started. I didn't know the interview was-
It was after one. It was 1:15.
Okay.
Which is why I was, I'm sorry to interrupt, which is why I didn't feel like I was putting him under the gun by, at this point, could you please wait till morning when I'm there?
Yeah. So it can pick him up at eight o'clock in the morning. He has four or five hours to review it. So again, I think it comes down to maybe-
But not to make a phone call to check on other employers. I mean, I, I would go the other way. Rather than put it on him that he should have asked for them sooner. I think that as soon as they get them, they should be disseminated to the department. He's busy doing other road stuff. He can't always remember and think, oh, now it's past five o'clock when he gets interviewed. You, if you have an employee, the minute we get him in HR, they should be sent up to you and you can start looking at them. You can start calling the prior employer or the other, or some of the contact.
See, I don't do that. I, I have HR do that. I don't call prior employers. I have them do it all.
But it's your prerogative as department director head. It's, you're going to be your employee.
Yep.
Or it's going to be the road department's employee. And, and HR supports them and helps them.
Yep.
But they have the ultimate decision. They can pick whoever.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you can pick whoever.
And we have guidelines for that, absolutely. But what I was concerned about is I just, I was concerned that it seemed like you were asked not to do that, that there was an opportunity to get it another time.
It came, it came suddenly.
We were texting back and forth. I was at a meeting.
I didn't know that T-Bone didn't have the applications yet. Otherwise, when I saw the email, she was going to be gone. Maybe I would say, hey, did T-Bone get before you? Yeah, it was one of those things that we were not here all the time and I just assumed.
And maybe, again, it comes down to just better communication with, among, and, and we've got to be a little bit more professional. We just have to be. Some, some of the tenor, and you're aware of that. I mean, I've been on conference calls and some of the tenor, is we, we just have to. I, I know it's frustrating. I, I know it, it gets aggravating, but-
We're all on the same team here. No one's trying to be hiding anything.
No, no, but I, I just, my concern initially was that how are employees going to, again, like I said, you guys are the ultimate arbiter. You are at the top in terms of HR. But going into the HR person's office, I have no doubt that you went into- Yes. That's the concern. She's not only the HR person, she's also your assistant.
But we are, we HR.
Right.
We need to keep the files. Before, we had, they were up in the clerk and recorder office and we could go up there and look at them. Because sometimes we had to handle those discipline things by ourselves.
When, when you, when you know about it. But from my concern was that it, it seemed to be that, that this should have been, or like you said, maybe with department, each department head that you, when you know, when you get the applications and you say, okay, I know with the road, he wants them as soon as it closes on the 27th. I give him, I hand them all over to him or whatever. I, I don't know. Again, maybe communication.
As soon as they close, they probably should just be bundled up and delivered to the-
Yeah. And see, I don't do any of the checking. And I guess that's my choice.
We write our policy so that it's all understood.
Well, it says in the policy that the department head gets, actually gets the, the applications and then the interviews are set.
Yeah. So we get, and I guess maybe we should look at that in terms of they get them at the closing date or- Yeah. And then do we, yeah, so I, I wonder if that's something. We don't set interviews until they actually get the applications.
And we don't.
Maybe we jump the gun.
No.
How do we set up the interviews with the-
We don't.
They were set up already and he didn't have the application.
He told me to set them up. He did not say I want the applications. He said, I want you to reserve one to four and set up the interviews. And I have one more application that I'm expecting to come in, which is why he called me at eight minutes to four. And I told him, okay, I've set up the two. Now I have the third and I'll set that up. He called, we had this conversation. He never said, bring me the applications. He never said, I want to come see the applications. I expect, as all department heads do, they come either look at the applications with me or they take them to their office. I don't call them and say, come get your applications. I let them know when one comes in. And Jason knew as each application came in. So I think it is, again, miscommunication. I said on the phone, I need all of your questions tomorrow, Friday, because I prepare for your interview. And I'll have folders made, but I won't be here on Tuesday. So I need to be able to do this on Friday before I leave. He said, I'll set it up with Casey to have her send them.
So given all these circumstances, I don't see what the crime was. And Lori, you being helpful.
No, I, no, and I, I'm not saying it's a crime. I just, it, it just concerned me because it, it sounded like everybody-
What, one of us walking in her office, what concerns you about that? I don't know if my key still fits. I couldn't tell you.
Yeah.
I got it. We could check it.
My concern was that-
I don't go in the office if it's locked, but if I needed something, I may want in there. And I have every right to be in there.
Yeah. My concern was Dawn had, had made it clear, was my understanding, that I was going to be gone on Tuesday. And there was texting, and that's the other thing. She was off and she's still getting texted. She's getting texted.
Out of respect, Lori was trying to be courteous and say, hey, by the way, I was in your office.
Yes.
Just to be polite.
And I don't know, I don't know why. I think it should have waited till Wednesday morning.
But he doesn't have, I, I don't think so because the, yeah, Tuesday is too late, really. When you, if you want to call, you know, people are, sometimes when you call-
Then he should have picked it up on Friday.
Even if he's not on the cell coverage, he's not by billing. Then when he does get the call and call you back, then you're middle of the interview.
He's off on Friday.
Yeah, yeah. Well, again, she was off on Tuesday. So I, I, I get calls at two o'clock in the morning.
No, I wasn't. Excuse me.
I'm not off. Department heads are, shouldn't be off really anytime. I mean, you know, so what I don't, what, what was concerning to me is Dawn asked that you not do that. And, or hey, everybody should have been aware that it should have been on Tuesday and it occurred anyway. So what I worry about is I think we need to be looking at HR and assistant role if we have to separate. I don't know what we have to do because there is some, the employee should expect some loyalty from the HR person too. Again, you guys do have access to that, but you could go in there. But also usually Dawn is there. I have there, I have no concerns that you were looking at anybody's personnel file. That doesn't, I know you didn't. I, I, if somebody asked me, I could say, I, I'm sure you didn't. I, I can't say that another employee isn't going to say, what do you mean Lori went in there when she was told, when she was asked not to, or when she was, you know? We, we just, it's, it's just a concern. And, you know, I'm not saying that Jason did anything wrong. It's not about that. That's why I emailed him saying, hey, I want you to be aware. I had court this morning. I want you aware, I'm going to be bringing this up as an example about agenda items and also about this. Because I, I just felt like it, it could have been handled a better way. And I agree, you know, if, if that's how every department head does it differently, then we've got to make that clear. If, if we don't have a policy on, we make sure that they have the applications before they set up interviews, then, then we don't set up interviews until they all have their things. I don't look at the application. That's just my choice. On a recent job hire for us, we only had a couple applicants. I said, we're going to interview them all. I didn't care what their application was. But if you, you know, if somebody says, I want to look at them before I do interviews, great. That's your right. It's the department that gets to decide. They have to have a reason for it. You guys are part of it. You absolutely, you are the arbiters of HR. But I, I just, it concerned me. It concerned me. When, when Dawn had asked, please wait till tomorrow and it wasn't. I said, wait a minute, that concerns me. Could we please put this on the agenda? So that was on me.
Lori, you have said several times I didn't work Friday. I worked Friday. I left at four. You, you told us, what, Thursday, that you had to ask for Friday off because you had family coming. So I was under the impression you were gone on Friday. I did know you were working Friday. But I did let you know, because you said just a minute ago you weren't in. But I was, I worked Friday. I left at four. There was so much work to you. Under the impression that your family was here and you weren't working Friday. Well, just so I, I just would like to make that clear that, yes, I did work on Friday and I did communicate that.
And I don't mind any of that. I'm just talking about that when we have situations like that that come up, there's nothing, I don't think there's, especially since the commissioners set the tone and set the parameters for HR. We don't even have to have HR. We can go back to doing it our way. We can hire somebody different. We could let Calanne and Casey do it. I mean, it's our purview.
Yes.
And so if it's our purview and Lori is here and wants to help the department director head, whoever it may be at that, there's nothing wrong with helping them because she's HR.
Yeah. And I'm not saying that's the issue. What I'm saying is it was communicated, please wait until the next day at eight o'clock. And now hearing that the interview's at one, I believe there probably should have been plenty of time or it could have been handled the, the week before. And, and maybe not. I, I don't know. And you're right. You guys could.
And maybe, and maybe you're right, but that, but that doesn't change the fact that none of that stuff lined up with the stars for whatever reason. Her being gone, him being gone, him not calling in or whatever. We came to the point where he asked for them. He needed them. He wanted to study them overnight, make a few phone calls during the night, evening, and maybe the next morning before the one o'clock. Big deal. I don't see the big deal. We, I mean, if it isn't going to be a big deal, then we'll be HR, then it won't be a big deal, right? I mean, I don't know.
And, and if that's how the commissioner wants to go, I would strongly advise against that. I think-
You know how many counties do it that way already? Because they're small.
We did it that way.
Yes. Yeah. Oh, I know. Believe me, I know. And I, I don't think it's a good idea.
Kept in the clerk and recorder's office locked. Calanne filed them away and nobody looked at them unless, unless there was a big issue and we had to look at, you know, discipline.
And, and you're right. You could. I just think, and I don't know if it was underlying tension or underlying issues before, I don't know. But I, I just, it concerned me how this occurred. And I thought, we, we can't-
It occurred innocently and helpfully.
At least she was courteous enough to say, hey, I'm going in your office and getting this.
And rather than- And she didn't get a text forbidding her to do it till after it was already done.
Yeah. And I don't know if I'd say forbidding. I would, I think it was, you know, and I haven't seen the text, was the idea of, oh, we've already discussed this. We can do it Tuesday morning. So I'm, you know, just bringing that up. And you're right. You guys can choose to do whatever you want. And, but in, in terms of HR, I would also strongly encourage you to be a little, we, we have to be careful about, or just be mindful of your employees. Not that they, you know, they are employees. They are paid. They are compensated. We get that. They, they do their work. They're paid for that. But we also owe them as HR. They have, they expect a loyalty or they expect a service from the HR person. I expect it as a department head. You guys do too. What I get concerned about is, again, putting Dawn in a position where- What I get concerned about is again, putting Dawn in a position where employees are feeling like she is the commissioner's stooge and she's relaying information to you that she shouldn't be. I don't believe that's happening. I believe it's out there because she's your assistant and she's also HR. So then when we've got.
Unfortunately, even before on HR slash, that's always been the poor demise of whoever the assistant is. It happened to previous ones, Cindy and Charlie and Casey. I mean, they're, it's just one of those, it's kind of like being a sergeant on the highway patrol, you know. You're disliked by the uppers and you're disliked by the lowers. You have no friends in the middle and that's kind of how the assistant, so you're right about that.
Yes, I mean, it's something that we look for.
Everybody regardless of their other position.
Right, so then should we consider? Do we need a separate HR? Do we, you know, I don't know. But I think it puts, it's, it's just a tough position to be in. And, or does it, you know, does it go back to the clerk and recorder? I don't know. Do you guys say we get rid of HR? I would say, don't do that. I think we need a full-time HR. And especially with this last year, it has been extremely challenging. And I have not done as good a job in HR as I should have in terms of getting opinions, doing research. I just haven't gotten to it. I just, yeah. So my concern and not knowing that you didn't get the text that said, please don't do that, it should be handled and it's, everybody knows I'm back on Tuesday, that was my concern. I said, wait a minute, you asked that she not go in there, that concerns me. Do I think you did anything inappropriate? No. If somebody said, I think she did, I would say, I don't believe it. Does it potentially, is there a concern? That's what concerned me, when people say, wait a minute.
The files she got were, was not even the files of employees.
No.
These were applications that are submitted to the county for, for employment.
That's right.
So she went in there and grabbed.
They weren't the original either, they were.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but that's not the issue. I, I have no doubt that you didn't go in and take a personnel file. But it was the idea of being told, of being asked, no, no, this is handled. We've got it all set for Tuesday morning, please don't go in there and get it. And that you didn't.
So an employee might have.
But I didn't know you didn't see that until today.
So they might, the employees might have an issue with a commissioner looking at their personnel file, you're saying?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think they could, but.
We can do that now.
No, I know. Well, I, I know we did that. I mean, we did one where I had an officer come and tell me that somebody wasn't qualified to be a supervisor, whatever. And we went and got the file and showed that he could. No, no, I get that. But it, it's the idea that the HR person said, no, no, we've got this, I've got this, please don't until Tuesday, everybody knows, or not till Wednesday, everybody knows I'm out. I did not know that you didn't get a text message until later saying, please don't do that. So that was the concern of.
Even if, even if she was here and said, no, no, I'm going to do it. We, we're the bosses, we can still say, we're, it's, HR is a supportive role, not a dictatorial role.
Right, but it, but that, that's not what the issue was. It was, the issue was, hey, no, we've got this handled, we're going to do it Wednesday. And that was not, you didn't get the text message.
I didn't see it until I'd already.
What I was concerned about is why are you going into that office when they can get it the next day?
Because it wasn't a next time, the department director requested it sooner than the next day.
Right.
And it's a public employment application. What's the harm in letting him see it when he needs to see it?
Right, and my, my concern was he couldn't have seen it. Yes, and he could have seen it the week before.
He's not an elected official, he works for us.
Right, he could have seen it the week before. He was aware that, yes, he, he was aware that she was gone that day. So I was concerned it was more tension undermining, something going on that, and it also, you know. You guys, of course, you can look at the HR stuff, but I felt like it was something that, uh-uh, no, no, no.
Well, and I would hope, I don't know, I have never gone over that with Dawn, but I would hope that that there's personnel files in there, that they're under lock and key. Because that door is left open at times. Anybody can walk in there at that time. Somebody off the street could go in there if they wanted to and that stuff should be locked up.
I don't know if I ever seen that door open with you not in there.
I know, it's very, very rare that that happens.
It is rare.
Yeah, yeah, yes. And I do, I might call her at Patty and Tamara, hey, I've got to run, just watch my door for a minute. But you're absolutely true and those things are locked. And you also know that you've always.
Yeah, we know that, we know that. There's never, I have no doubt that you didn't, it never, I, it would never, if somebody had said, Lori went in there, she could have looked at a person, I would say that didn't happen. I know it didn't happen. However, you know, from my understanding, this was something that was resolved.
Even if she did, I'd say, so what? We can do that now. We can go look at it.
Yes, yes.
I don't understand what the big woo is about it at all. Because we are the county commissioners who oversee all the elected officials and the hired people. We have Rhode, Rhode Department Head, we have M Planner Head, we have Sanitarian Head. Some are elected, some are not, and we.
And maybe it was just the level of just a respect thing.
We don't have to go through there and get our jollies off by just looking at those things.
No, I know, but we know that.
Like I said, I don't even know if my key works.
Right, we know that, but also kind of a respect thing where, you know, hey, I've got this handled. We're going to do this Wednesday morning and, you know, it was my, I felt like it was just not, you know, that was just not a level of respect, so. So that was, that was my issue that I asked to be brought up on the commissioner's agenda. And that's it for my stuff.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Start the next meeting at 2:50 PM. Is our fiscal year 2022 county alcohol tax designation form. And Nancy Smith is here from Choices because we have used all of our tax money before to fund your treatment center there. And we each have before us a letter from you.
Did Dawn get a copy?
I think she ever made an actual one.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Nancy, just curiosity, how many employees do you have down there now?
I've got eight.
Wow.
I've got Tiana is still our employee, even though she's in Oregon. She still does the billing and everything. And of course, Joe is my, one of my employees and he's over at the conference center. That, he does all the payroll and the taxes and everything else. And then Kristen is going to school to get her master's and so she's out of state right now too, but she's doing it online and then she's working on the groups with me. So we just keep going. Yeah. And like I said in here, you know, those people that work for me, most of them live here and pay taxes here and send kids to school and, and Kylie is working for me too. My granddaughter that graduated last year and she's going to school. She, she went to Dylan to get registered and they showed her her dorm room and she was all excited because they canceled so much last year for graduation, you know. And so she was all excited to get to go to college. And then a couple of weeks before school, it's going to be all online.
Yeah.
So we hired her and so she get her homework there because she's just receptionist and she had time to do their homework and worked for me and she's just super good.
Good.
These kids are born knowing how to do all that technology.
Yeah, I know.
I just call her when I need help, help me, somebody help grandma. Yeah, yeah, but it's good. Seventeen years I've been there. Seventeen years in February's when I went into private practice. Yeah. And before that, it was eleven years with Family Services. That's a long time, that was like dog years, seventy-seven years.
Is our alcohol tax money from the state still about the same amount, you know?
I think so.
Fifteen or two thousand or something.
Something, yeah. So I just came to show you I was still alive, even though I'm not down at the office anymore.
I think we already signed the approved to go to Choices.
And I'm not going back to the office. I'm, I'm working at home and I see between fifty and sixty clients a week on Zoom. And I still do the AT class. First time I did it, I had fifteen clients on there. I've got another one scheduled the nineteenth of June, but, and it works from all over. And my groups I do all on Zoom, so. Yep, and bless Charlie because she, when the pandemic happened, she just went to all of our homes and set up all the computers and the phones. So we were operating from a distance all over the place, but still operating, you know. And she redid all of the paperwork and everything all online. So once they go on the portal and get into the queue, they can do all their work and send it back and then we score it and then we do, you know, so it works really well. I wouldn't have been smart enough to do all that.
Well, do we need a motion, Laura? I guess it'd be helpful for everyone to agree that we're selecting our local.
Well, I would make a motion that we give one hundred percent to, of the mineral county alcohol and tax dollars to Choices for Change.
Well, second that.
A motion and a second, any more discussion? Thank you Nancy for keeping, we like our dollars to be in house and you employ people and you help people. It's not just about jobs, it's about the help you do. I know a lot of people see you and that's good, so.
You know, when I was with Family Services, I saw the, the lapses in services. And I had several people that died on a waiting list to get into treatment in Missoula that would have a wreck and kill themselves and, you know. So I think it's really important that we see them when they need to be seen. So I appreciate it. I appreciate the, the support and the, you know, confirmation from you guys all these years. It's been really helpful.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Got a big thank you again.
You're welcome, thank you.
Three fifteen, we have, I'm glad you're here, Kate Barrett. I had questions about this. So we selected the high deductible as an option for our employees. However, we weren't fully informed or aware that CO would be pitching it as the difference of the money goes to a health savings account. I thought we were just giving people a more affordable plan and it's not like there was this existing option of the over amount going into a, kind of like a, what do you call it? Like a, kind of like a flex account?
It's an HSA account.
Yeah, it's a health saving account.
So that's where we're at now because we have to decide if we're going to allow the, the difference to be in that account.
It's a hundred and forty dollars. That's the difference per month.
That's not as much as I thought it would be.
Yeah, yeah, because the high deductible plan is six ninety-seven for member and then eight thirty-seven for our RM fifteen hundred. So it's a hundred and forty.
And how many employees have thus far signed up for this with the belief in their mind that the one forty would go into the HSA?
None as of I, I don't know of any. I think there were two thinking about it, but they were kind of waiting for your guys' decision. I think they signed up for the high deductible from what I heard. But I don't know if they're going to have extra money taken out or if they're waiting for your guys' decision.
Okay.
Laura, did she not for sure did that?
She didn't before this got brought up. She was already.
Yeah, so she, so she can't possibly know either way. Would you assume that whether it will be put in there or won't be put in there?
I took it out of her check because she has requested six hundred dollars coming out of her check, so I took it out. I don't think she knew about this.
Okay, that, I mean this.
Yeah, so only two employees were under the assumption that you guys would contribute.
Kel, what, why are they, why are they saying they want the high deductible instead of regular insurance?
Um, I don't know, I can, you know, I was on the fence about it because of my kids. It would have been cheaper.
Yeah, and the health savings, the kids, I can see that.
But the other, I don't, I don't know, maybe they just.
Okay, so what happens if, if they quit? Where does that money go?
It stays there because it's part of their health benefit. So it would stay in their account.
But then if they quit.
They take it with them?
They take it with them?
That's, yeah, because it's put into a total separate, it's out of my hands. I send the check away, I'm no longer responsible for that money.
And what happens if we do this for one year and then next year when it comes out for the enrollment changes and we change to another, what happens to the money then? They just keep it?
I think so, yeah, because you can roll that over from year to year to year to year. Yeah. I mean, I don't know. I think I would keep the high deductible plan for employees, I guess. It's not a bad option.
No, that's why we kind of elected it to begin with.
Yeah, the school offered all, I mean, they had quite a few high deductible plans.
But I, well, my problem with it is, so they said something about when you get to fifty-five or something, then, then that money's theirs and I don't see the point.
It's like the county putting you into a savings account.
Yeah. When we offer them the best insurance package around right now.
Right.
And so the, to me, the only possible reason they would want the high deductible is the coin.
Well, there is, I mean, there's restrictions on how you can spend it, of course.
But not after fifty-five.
Not after fifty-five.
And I wasn't aware of that.
Or they wish to quit, right? So, yeah, so it's more or less.
The one benefit I could think, Dwayne, is that so if we, if you have a full-blown health insurance like we provide, there are restrictions what they'll pay for, like they do not pay for braces or whatever. But if you have a HSA, a health savings account, you can use that money for braces. So people are still using it for the right reasons. They can't go out and buy a boat with it. But yeah, if they don't spend it for other things until fifty-five, it's like.
But they can also, they can also save that money themselves. We're already paying their health insurance. They can save that money themselves.
There you go, yeah.
And.
Well, but honestly, it's like, so there's this RM three thousand plan, you know. So the max out of pocket is five thousand. If you go to a high deductible, you know, your max is three thousand. But they don't pay for anything upfront. You have to pay for it all. You know, you can't, this isn't like, the high, the HSA isn't like the flex plan where you can only use the funds that you put in at the time that's in that account. Unlike the flex account, if you choose to contribute seven hundred dollars in one year, you can pull that out. July second, you can have that.
So, I mean, we, we do have a flex plan that if they choose to.
We do have a flex plan. The bad thing about the flex is you, you know, you have to use it within that, that year and you can only roll five hundred dollars over. If not, you lose it. And we administer that. Yeah, so the, the main question is just if you guys want to contribute that hundred and forty or not.
I don't.
My only issue would be people believing that that's what we all agreed to.
But if they're not signed up for it yet.
There's not very many people signed up. I only see a couple people sign up for it.
Signed up for it, but not with the.
The high deductible.
But not, but not signing up for the belief that it's going to be.
I don't.
An HSA account set up.
They were waiting for your decision, yeah, I don't.
All right. For what it's worth, that makes it a little bit easier. Because I truly thought we were just offering a lower premium for people so that when they have, you know, kids and other.
And I didn't even realize that the county could contribute.
Yeah.
Until I had called Pam.
Yeah.
And she said, yes, it was part of the, you know, your county health benefit. It goes towards your health benefits.
So all the forms have been turned in and from your recollection, only two have signed up for the lower deductible health plan and those two are aware that we may not.
I think so, yeah, I'm pretty sure. Not, not, I don't think anybody, not everybody signed up.
I have to go check that.
There's like six, seven people last time I checked.
I sent out tons of notices, told department heads.
I don't know if they don't sign up, if it just defaults to what they had or if it drops them. I'm not quite sure.
I'll find out.
So I'll make a motion not to contribute county contributions to the HD slash HSA health insurance plan.
I would second that motion.
A motion and a second. Any more discussion on this issue, how it works, how it doesn't work? What's the HD monthly premium?
Six ninety-seven. For employee.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.